Ms. Brown, you have six. I don't know if you want to start.
That ain't gonna work.
Hello, Councilwoman Galloway?
Hi, Ms. Galloway.
Hello. Hello.
Okay, Ms. Brown, everyone is present.
Present, okay. Shall I start?
If you want.
You in control, you in control.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Inez M. Brown, City Clerk. And I would like to call this Flint City Council meeting to order. Pursuant to the newly revised Open Meetings Act, each council member shall state as they are attending the meeting remotely and shall state where he or she is located, the county, the city, or state. At this time, we're calling Ms. May.
Um, this is... We ask the men of parents. I'm Councilman May. And I'm calling from, um, Flint, Michigan, in Genesee County.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, I'm Councilman Murray. This thing is beefing or something.
Point of order, Ms. Brown, can you help me get that audio straight?
I'm Councilman Murray Davis. Remotely attending this meeting in Genesee County, in Flint, Michigan.
Mr. Garrett?
Hello? That noise in the way?
Did you hear that? Fantine O'Gara attending from Flint.
Point of order, Ms. Brown, anytime somebody go to talking, we gotta get that audio right. It's gonna be imperative.
We're trying to find it, Mr. May. Sorry about that. Ms. Fields?
This is Kate Fields, attending remotely from Genesee County, Flint, Michigan.
Ms. Winfrey?
Yes, this is Herbert Winfrey, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan, in Genesee County.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes, this is Monica Galloway, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan, in Genesee County.
Mr. Griggs?
This is Alan Griggs, attending the City Council meeting remotely from Flint, Michigan, in Genesee County.
This is Eva Worthing, attending remotely in Genesee County, Flint, Michigan.
Madam, madam clerk, this is Davina. Before you move on, I just want to say I think I've located the caller that is having the feedback. Um, I need to make sure that there's somebody that shouldn't be unmuted. However, from what I can determine, it's coming from people that are using the app. Um, because I had mine on the app and I turned it off. But I think I've determined who it is, so that person... I keep muting you and unmuting you because it's your phone that's causing the problem. I just wanted to say that. And it's people that are using the app that are causing the problem right now. We're still working on it.
Okay. Can we commence with the agenda, though, at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you'll proceed.
Madam chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks for giving me the floor. Um, madam chair, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I've had calls two ways. One of them, the motion will be to allow the public to speak first, and I so move.
Point of order? Yes? 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 Point of order? Yes?
Point of order, Madam Chair. We are not currently at the point in time to do changes to the agenda. That motion is not in order at this point in time.
Are there any other comments?
Uh, he trying to get in, let the little truck in. I don't know what he think he doing.
Are you asking for second of motion?
Could you repeat that, Madam Chair? Somebody was talking. Yeah, I did make a motion.
If I... This is Councilwoman Galloway. I'll second, I support that motion.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
When a point of order is called, whoever is chairing has to rule on the point of order. My point of order is that that motion is not appropriate because we are not at the point in the, uh, meeting agenda where we do changes or additions to the agenda. So that motion is not appropriate at this point in time. We should be moving on to organization of the city council.
Point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Madam Chair, um, I thought that there was, at least on the council, that said that a motion is always in order. And so my, my point of information, um, to Councilwoman Fields is, have we changed that a motion is always in order?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, this is a city council meeting that we do annually, and I believe this motion is meant to obstruct the business of the agenda, which is organization of the city council. The motion is not appropriate at this point in time.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I searched the rules and the charter before I decided to make that motion. It is clear that on the second Monday, we, um, elect a president and vice and whatever. And it is clear from the charter and the rules that the presiding officer until that done is, in this case, Inez Brown, the City Clerk. I appreciate you giving me the floor. I appreciate you giving Ms. Galloway the floor, and she seconded. We are now in the discussion on the motion. If Ms. Fields is well read, once she seen you rule and move on, whether it's expressly or implied, she could have appealed. Right now, we're in discussion on the motion, and I'm telling you, you can include Ms. Wheeler, you can include the whole city of Flint, but when they read the charter, it tell us to organize. It tells you if there's nothing in the rules about making...
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes.
Uh, it, it... You know, Mr. Mays believes that he's in charge right now, and he is not. You have not ruled. We are not in discussion. And, um, if you are unsure of how to proceed, because this shouldn't be your job right now. We need to get a president first. Um, I suggest we have Ms. Wheeler come on and, and tell us her thoughts.
Ms. Angela.
Ms. Wheeler.
The purpose of this portion of the meeting is under the charter, under three dash two oh one, is to, um, for, for the city clerk to preside, um, until there's a chosen president, and then thereafter, um, the, the president is elected. So I don't, like I said, I, I don't, I, I think that's the one singular purpose that the city clerk has, is to, um, to preside over.
Point of information, point of information. Madam Chair, point of information.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
Through you, through you to Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Wheeler, can you look above that, and it'll tell you whenever something is not addressed in the council rules or the charter. We follow Robert's rules. Under Robert's rules, a motion is in order. Look above that, and it'll direct you, a presiding officer or a chair. We conduct ourselves under Robert's rules. It doesn't limit, Ms. Brown, to that. It limits her to chairing a meeting. We are the body. I made a motion, it's been seconded. Look above that, and it says, if you don't see it addressed in our rules or state law, we follow Robert's rules. That's what we just did. Made a motion. Look above that.
Madam Chair, point of order.
That was a point of information. We waiting on the answer.
No, we're still waiting on the answer to the point of order, Mr. Mays. There's a point of order by Ms. Fields. There is no other, uh, motion until, uh, Ms. Inez Brown rules on that.
Well, she's the chair. She'll make decisions.
Right. She's not supposed to be the chair, Mr. Mays. She's just here to get our votes for president, and I feel like...
I guarantee you, it says she presides, she chairs, and then it also tells us we govern ourselves in the process.
Point of order. Ms. Brown, Mr. Mays deliberately interrupted Ms. Worthing, and you had given her the floor. She had a point of order. I had a point of order. You have not ruled. And... Mr. Mays cannot just take the floor.
I did a point of information.
After your point of information, you then interrupted Ms. Worthing.
No, Ms., Ms. Worthing interrupted Ms. Wheeler, who the point of information was directed to. She was out of order, and she should be quiet and let Ms. Wheeler answer. Is it above that?
Uh, Ms. Wheeler's answer was very clear. All we need is Ms. Inez Brown to say...
Point of order. She's still interrupting, out of order.
Excuse me. We're waiting for Ms. Brown. Let's all be quiet, please.
If I could go back to the very beginning of this particular meeting. To state the purpose of the meeting itself, I wasn't able to do that. And the purpose of the meeting, of the first order of business for tonight's meeting, is the annual election of the city council president. And I think for the record, it was, it's important that I indicate that. I'm putting that on the table then. For you all to decide to do whatever you want.
Point of order, Madam President. What point of order, Madam Chair?
It's in compliance, in compliance, in compliance with Robert's rules.
Point of order. Well, it's a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. Can we go into discussion? Is my point of order?
Ms. Wheeler, I'm going to defer to you on that, please.
So again, down to what the charter says in three dash two oh one. The city clerk shall preside until the council has chosen a, a president. The purpose of the city clerk is for her to take the vote, to preside over the election of the council. That is the...
Point of, point of information, point of information. Can Ms. Wheeler tell us what she's reading and what she's emphasizing? Let's just read it.
Three dash two oh one B, that's what I read.
Ms. Wheeler, can you just reread it in its entirety? I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, I'm looking for my charter right now. Can you just read B, please?
Yeah, on page twenty-six of the charter, three dash two oh one B, as in boy. It says, "The city clerk shall preside until the city council has chosen a president."
I got disconnected. I'm back.
Ms. Brown is about to, uh, call the poll.
Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Clerk, um, through you to Attorney Wheeler. Attorney Wheeler, so you just read it in its entirety, and, and I don't want to belabor this. I don't, we can, we can, we can move on. But what you read does not denote that she doesn't preside over anything that's added. It just says that she presides over the meeting until a, a, um, president is, um, elected, and that's fine. But can you tell me, in the rules, does it also allow us to... Because we're just talking about public comment. That's not something that, um, the clerk usually has to really do anything over. If it's not the will of this body to, to hear from the public, I don't have a problem with that. I'm not gonna, you know, belabor it. I just want to make sure that the record is clear and that the, um, the opportunity was given. This council has the ability to appeal the decision of the chair and, and, and move on, but there's been none of that, and what's been read is not saying that it's, that we've been practicing in the past is not the same. And so, um, if, if, if this body wants to rule against it, all they have to do is, and it's sad that we wasted all this time. All you do is take a vote, and those that want to say no that the public can't speak before we, um, choose the council president and vice president, it's so simple. And so, um, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Mad, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, and that's exactly where we at. The council will vote, and we'll move on. That's the procedure. And Ms. Wheeler, if you look at right above that, it tells you to resort to parliamentary procedure. It says she presides. It even language in there that say, when we first get in office, we can do stuff up to thirty days. So she's presiding. She's a capable provider. There's been no appeal to her decision to ask, and that was a second. We're in discussion. We're discussing it, and I'm telling you, people will vote five to four, six to three, whether they want to hear from the public before they vote for president or anything else. I done got cause. And then my second issue would have been, since we didn't have committee meetings, to discuss the presidency publicly for five or ten minutes before we vote because it's serious, just like the President of the United States. And so I know what's going on in the city. There's been a motion made by a council person, properly seconded. We should be in discussion, and then it should be a roll call vote as to whether or not we hear from the public first. If Ms. Fields and Ms. Worthing don't like it, they can state these words. I appeal the decision of the chair, and we'll still discuss it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't appeal the ruling of the chair because the chair hasn't ruled on my initial point of order, which was, it's not appropriate for a motion at this time. The purpose of this meeting has, has been validated, uh, by the city attorney of having the clerk preside only until the city council shall elect from its members a presiding officer. So I believe, Madam Clerk, that I would encourage you to rule that we will move on with the elections of the council president.
I'd like to defer to Angela Wheeler again on that, in terms of dialogue and discussion. Angela?
Yes.
If you don't mind.
Yes, no, no problem. I, I, I think the, the charter hasn't changed from the two thousand eighteen charter. Before that, the nineteen seventy-four charter. And the, the, um, term for the president is to be voted on as the first order of business as stated in three dash two oh one B under meetings in the charter, and that's...
Point of information. Can she read that? Don't say it's the first letter because it ain't nowhere wrote in that. Read it. It says until a president is elected. Could you ask her, Madam Chair, to read it verbatim?
I've written my third time reading it. It says, "The city charter shall presi... The city clerk shall preside until the council has chosen a president."
Well, Angela, is there anything in there that would indicate that dialogue could not take place?
No, there's nothing in here that doesn't say that it, that it can, but, but, but that's what it says, that you are presiding, um, until, until the, until the president is, is chosen. You are there to make sure the vote goes forward, not to become a... And I, I say that...
Point of order. She adding stuff in. Says her own opinion.
That's what I give, is an opinion based on the law. That's why I'm giving it.
I hope you give them same opinions when they violate it and try to remove me.
It doesn't, my opinion does not based on the person. It's based on the law. And that's the rea- reason why I'm supposed to do this. Not because of a particular person. That would be arbitrary. This is based on the charter. It's been in effect since two thousand eighteen.
The charter is the law, correct?
Seventy-four charter.
The charter is the law, correct? It says she preside until one is chosen. That's all it says.
Yes, it does.
That's correct.
Ms. Inez Brown, please, please rule.
Well, I feel I'm caught in the middle here. Because number one, I guess I can understand where Mr. Mays is coming from in terms of wanting more information, but I can also understand what the other side is saying as it relates to the charter itself in terms of the lack of dialogue and so forth. So I feel that I'm kind of caught in the middle here in terms of making the decision. But I also feel that because, because, if I can finish, Mr. Mays, because a, a motion was made to have someone come forward. I think it's up to you all, I'm gonna put it back on you all, to vote on it and make a decision as to what you really want to do.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this is Councilman Griggs. Who seconded this motion?
Ms. Galloway.
Thank you. Right in my lead. Ma- Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I di- I didn't hear it. It was to Griggs. What did he say exactly?
I said, "Thank you."
Okay. You're welcome. Mr. Davis, you're next.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Any way possible, we could just vote this up and down and get back to the, uh, business of the city? Thank you.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, even though Mr. Davis want to vote it up and down, you, when it's discussion, you get a first round and a second round. That's the procedure, and then you vote it up or down, so we getting there.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Did you recognize me, Madam Chair?
Yes, I did, Ms. Kate, Ms. Fields.
Okay. Respectfully, I say to you, a chair can't say you got me in the middle. A chair has to rule, and they have to rule on the first point of order that was made, which was my point of order, that this is not appropriate. You've heard from the city attorney on the charter. I believe it's inappropriate to have this motion prior to what's on the agenda and what's on the charter, which is that you, as a city clerk, are presiding at the meeting only until we have elections for the council president. So you, you must rule one way or another. Are you in agreement with my point of order, or you deny my point of order?
Point of order. I, 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 I thought she did rule. You didn't hear it?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did not hear you rule. I heard you give an opinion that you felt caught in the middle, which is not a response... which is not a response that the chair needs to make on a point of order. You either agree with the point of order, or you deny the point of order. That then gives the person, or any council person, the right to appeal.
So I'm going to defer again to the city attorney, Angela.
Um, Ms. Angela, um, I, again, I, I think that, um, the clerk has been put in a position that is not what the chair for. She's here to preside over the specifically and for you all to run your own meeting. And so the purpose of what the clerk is here to do is to make sure that you all vote, get your vote count for the president. And then the, the clerk steps aside and that person takes over the remainder of the meeting. That's how it's been this year, and that's how it's been for all of the years.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, you know what, counsel, we, we have the ability to take care of this. This is a simple vote up or down. And why we would be putting Ms., Ms., um, uh, Clerk Brown on the spot, you guys, come on. It's a simple vote. Yes, we want the public to be able to weigh in. No, we don't. And so Ms. Brown, when she accepted a second and said, "I am going to defer to the council", that was her words. Defer to the council means handle your own selves. And so, mm, mm, I'm, I'm in discussion. I will be supporting-
Uh, point of order. Point of order. Point of order, this is Ms. Worthing.
Ms. Worthing?
We are not in discussion. Uh, Ms. Gallaway is no longer a president, and she's-
Her point of order.
She-
She's out of order, because a point of order is talking about violating- And I had the floor, and you not using it for the point of order-
You did not have the floor. You did not have the floor, Miss-
I did. I asked for the floor.
You're not-
But you're not using it-
You said you were in discussion. We are waiting for Ms. Brown to rule. Please cease talking.
You know what?
Ms. Brown.
You know what? She is, you guys, hey, I withdraw my support. Evil Worthing, you should be ashamed of yourself. This is about letting the public speak, and you should be ashamed of yourself.
Point of order. We in discussion, I would guess. Ms. Gallaway, the point of withdrawing, it don't work like that. It have to take a motion to vote. Just kind of let them keep talking. Let this keep flowing. Just relax. So Ms. Brown, if nobody else-
So, we are waiting for Ms. Brown to rule. We still have not heard her rule. Uh, Ms. Fields, point of order.
She's out of order, you guys. Point of order. Ms. Worthing is disrupting the meeting, and she's being argumentative. And none of this council is allowing her to be corrected, you guys. Ms. Brown is not here for that. Vote yes or no, and stop putting her in the middle.
Madam Chair?
No, stop, Ms. Fields. You can't talk either. Ms. Worthing, aren't you gonna point of order?
You are ridiculous. I feel sorry for you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The support for the motion has been withdrawn. And we can go back and forth on all of these legalities eight ways to Sunday, but we're not conducting the city business. The purpose of the clerk chairing this particular meeting is simply to conduct the elections for the president of the council, who then proceeds to chair the meeting. I suggest that we move on, and that's what we do, Ms. Brown.
Point of order.
Not speaking of action.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, under council rules, when a motion is made in second, in order to withdraw it, we have to vote to withdraw it. You can't just withdraw it off of words. But not only that, we at the close of it, the end of it. They have one round. If they don't use their five minutes in discussion, then they can talk a second round. I want to wrap this up with a second round by saying, I just want to see how many of them, the five that want to vote for Kate Fields or whoever, I want to see if they want to hear from the public first, and then we get to respond. And then we vote and elect this all important president. I'm not gonna let them do me like Trump and him, and, um, I'm Biden and him. This is a very important thing. They always talking about hear from the public, hear from the public. The public been called me. I appreciate the second on the motion. Ms. Gallaway, don't trip off of this mess. And then we'll vote, and let the vote be four to five, six to three. I ain't scared to hear from the public. Ms. Brown know how to preside over public comment. Thank you so much. I'll be voting yes.
So Madam, uh, city attorney, is the motion back on the floor again? Should we vote on it? Should they cast a vote on it at this time?
Um, what it, what appears to be happening is that, mm, that they don't want to do our, not they, but the charter says what's supposed to happen. The charter says it's a, you're presiding, you're preside. And you, you're presiding for the purposes of, until the president-
Point of information. It don't say purposes. It's saying until a president is elected, she presides. We know what providers do. Don't make it up, Angela.
I'm not making it up.
Madam Chair, Santino here.
Yes, Mr. Santino.
I, I think we're gonna do this all, all night long. I mean, we're already, it's already six oh three, and the meeting's carried at five thirty. Pretty clear, from my understanding of the charter and the way that council has always been done since, not only I've been on it, but since I've, since, from I've been a very, very long time, is that when you chair the meeting, the very first thing of order that we're supposed to do is vote on council leadership. And it's, and if not, if we get their other motions in there, um, regardless of if we agree, if we want to hear from the public, or if we want to vote on certain things that are on the agenda later on, that's just, that's just not the way the coun- the charter expects us to do it. Uh, it's for us to vote on leadership first, so that way we can have a chair. And then once we have our chair and leadership, then we can decide on what route we want to go. And then we can do, get to a change of changes. So, I mean, I think it's very clear to, to me, and I, I believe, and Ms. Wheeler's saying the same thing, is that your job right now is not to oversee other votes except for the simple one of voting on the council leadership. And we can't do other business until council leadership has been decided. Very clear, um, and it's nothing personal regardless of what motion. And if we just stuck with the simple idea of, we can make whatever motion we want, as long as seconded, I can make a motion right now that we vote on council leadership right now on the floor, and that could be seconded, and we could be-
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order.
Yes, Ms. Mays.
Point of order. My point of order, if the young fellow is wrong, you came with a motion on top of a motion. You can't make another motion. I'm here to-
The point of, of what I'm saying is that the very first thing we're supposed to do on council on this day annually is to select council leaders. That's just the way it always has been. It's clear to me that's what the charter expects us to do, um, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be. So I, I do think that you have to make the decision, um, to allow it to go, uh, to allow us to do what we're supposed to do, because clearly, I mean, we're gonna be here all night if we don't ever make a decision.
Hey, is there any other discussion? So based upon what, uh, the city attorney is indicating, I have to carry out my assignment, which is a one-time thing. And that is to have the election, and then you all take it from there.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
But I have to indicate, Ms. Mays, for as long as I've been here, I don't recall that we've gone-
Point of order. If I say I appeal the ruling of the chair, the presiding officer have to say, "Is there a second?" If Angela will allow, I will read into the record what it says. It says, "If it's not addressed in the charter or our rules", which is not, it just says you preside. Then it says you go to Robert's rules. And Robert's rules allow the presiding officer to take a motion. I'm in a point of order. I'm in a point of order. You out of order interrupting my point of order. I'm trying to tell, explain to Ms. Brown that I appeal the ruling of the-
Point of order.
We in a point of order.
Taking the floor under the guise of doing appeal to the ruling of the chair. You have to ask for a second. The court-
I'm in a point of order.
But he does not have the right to take the floor and start debate.
I have to write to delicately talk to this chair without you hollering.
Hi.
Ms. Brown, would you see if there's a second to the appeal? Because if you had a rule, they wait, they opposite, they would appeal. You rule opposite of Ms. Gallaway's motion in second, so I'm appealing. If there's a second, if a second, if it ain't, it ain't, you know. I know what the rules say. That's why I'm suing Kate Fields and them now, and Angela and them too.
I'm asking for a second at this time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, Madam President, I'm in chair, if I might. You have to state why you rule we should move on and ignore the motion. And then you then come back and ask us each, do we have any one-time argument? Then we vote on the appeal. You get to close in arguments as well. So simply state to us why you said you wouldn't honor the motion that had been seconded. You said it already, but just repeat it now and then open it up to us.
Uh, please, Ms. Winfrey Carter, seconded the motion, if I recall correctly.
Appeal, yeah. Now it's your turn to, you know, speak.
Right. Okay. It's her turn to do, to speak.
It's your turn to tell why, it's your turn to tell why you said you would ignore the motion and move on with the election. That's what I appealed. And so you should speak up, and then open it up to us.
I think, um, Mr. Mays, I'm going to defer to the city attorney again. Okay? Angela, if you don't mind.
Um, point of order.
Point of order.
Madam Chair, there is no point of order while the appeal is on the floor.
You can't defer to the, the, the attorney either, Kate. If we're gonna follow the appeal process, the attorney doesn't get to speak.
Ms. Brown, if you want to waive your opening, you could waive it. And then just ask, do we have something to say? Let's get this over with.
Well, do you have something you want to say?
Any council person, if they don't, I will. Yeah, I'll say something. I appreciate Ms., if I have the floor, if you give me the floor, I'll say something. Madam-
Yes.
Presiding, uh, yeah, um, I can appreciate Ms. Winfrey Carter in principle, um, seconding this. I want to see what Santino and, um, Mr. Gera, Councilperson Gera and Mr. Davis gonna vote. Do we hear from the public before they launch they vote for themselves, for Kate or me or whoever they gonna vote for? But you know, I know when the deck is stacked. So I appreciate the second on the appeal. Ms. Brown, you was headed the right way, getting the call for a roll call on the vote, and we'd be over. But they might have appealed you. I would have stood with that. So you have done a good job presiding. That's what you do. And when you provide, it clearly states, without making nothing up, you provide until we elect the president. We gonna get to that business. They know we gonna get to that business. They just don't want the public to chime in, because Maurice was on Facebook saying who he would vote for prematurely and publicly. And so we know what's going on. I'll be voting on this appeal. I appealed it. So I can't vote with you on this, but Ms. Brown, you too nice. You let Angela and Kate near, you know, but you, you say let us figure it out. So we'll figure it out in the appeal. This field probably will get more yeses agreeing with you, Ms. Brown, than no. But I'll be voting no, and I'll see if five other people do. And then once this appeal, and I'm wrapping up, once this appeal fails, then we'll get on with the election. And I want the whole city of Flint to see, and I want them to comment after the fact. And I want them to see who blocked them out before the fact. Because we just finished a fantastic election for a president. Character means something. God rest the citizens of the city of Flint.
Madam Chair?
Yes, uh-huh. Yes, Ms. Field.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be ruling, uh, voting in favor of your ruling where you correctly stated that you believe you were there to preside over the council election. You've asked for the city attorney's opinion. She's read the charter three or four times, and I believe you ruled correctly. So I believe once this appeal is over, and I hope, uh, the appeal fails, because I do agree with your ruling, I hope you will then promptly move into the council elections. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Um, yes. I, I will be voting no. I am not in support of the, um, chair's, um, um, ruling. I, I think, okay, and I'm gonna read this again. The charter says, "The city clerk shall preside until the city council has chosen a president." Until we get to that portion of the meeting where we elect a president, then that's when Ms. Brown's job is over. Okay? We had a motion. A motion is always in order. And I think it is beneficial for us to hear from the public. The public put us in these seats, so we should always hear from the public. They should always be able to weigh in. So I will be voting no. And I hope my other colleagues will see that the public is the reason that we're sitting in the, in the, in these seats. And they need to be able to talk about who they would like to sit up here as president. So, I'm gonna vote no. Thank you. Madam Chair, Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to apologize, uh, to Ms. Brown. Uh, on behalf of city council, I know that you had no idea this was going to happen to you, nor did you expect it. And the, the council members who made this motion and have been harassing and bullying Ms. Inez Brown should be ashamed of themselves. This is unprecedented, as Mr. Mays likes to say. This has never happened before in the history of council meetings. It is a way to try to bully and shame others for the way they're gonna-
It is a way to try to bully and shame others for the way they're gonna vote, uh, to bring race into it, uh, and, and, um, they're unhappy. And it's quite apparent. Uh, the vote is gonna go down the way the vote will go down. It is not the public's job to choose the president. It is the city council's job. The public does not have to be, um, subjected to abuse from a president, as we have been this last past year. We do. We get to decide. It's not the public's job, it's not on our agenda, and again, now I apologize to the public. Because now it's been forty-five minutes into a meeting in which we should have a president and move along with business. But sadly, this is how things go with the council the way it currently is. Uh, my apologies, and I, and I hope we can just move on. Thank you.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you for indulging, this Councilman Davis. I'm looking at my agenda. My agenda say, organization of the city council, then it goes down and say, call to order. We're not even in the meeting until we elect the president, so all of this time been wasted with foolishness. All your job was, was just like you stated, as well as attorney willing. To get us a president, then we call the meeting to order and we go from there.
Point of information, point of information. Through you to the speaker, Mr. Davis, can you look at your agenda closely? It's two calls to orders, Ms. Brown, call this meeting to order.
Thank you for acknowledging. I'm speaking of the call to the order of president-elect that this council business get done. It's not Ms. Brown's job to do our council business and frustrate Ms. Brown or try to embarrass her. Thank you for indulging.
Are there any other comments? Guess Madam Secretary, you could do the roll call?
Mr. Mays? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Ms. Gates?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
So it is five yes, four no.
Ms. Brown, it's election time.
At this time, it's the process of choosing a city council president, and I'll commence it with the roll call. And I'll start with Mr. Mays. Mr. Mays?
Mr. Mays, vote. Somebody saying something?
You would provide it with a name? Yes, I'm-
Yeah, okay, I hear what you say. I'll say Mays.
Mr. Davis?
Councilperson Fields.
Mr. Santino, Guerra?
Councilwoman Fields.
Hello? Pardon?
Councilwoman Fields.
Ms. Field?
Councilwoman Fields.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Councilwoman Galloway.
Mr. Winfrey?
Councilwoman Galloway.
Ms. Galloway?
Councilwoman Galloway.
Mr. Griggs?
Councilwoman Fields.
Ms. Worthing?
Councilwoman Fields.
It's not a laxative, it works differently, Linda's health relief belly pain, unless you have more frequent and-
If I could, if you all could listen to the vote. One for Mr. Mays. Five for Ms. Fields. And three for Ms. Galloway. So I believe Ms. Kate Fields, Councilwoman Kate Fields, received five votes, which then makes her the council president for this upcoming year. Ms. Field?
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Um, I appreciate your patience and your endurance through that. Before we hold the election for the council vice president, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support. The job of being council president is not always an easy job, and I would like to also thank my predecessor for her time serving as council president. As this council moves into its final years of current term, I have confidence that we can find ways to better serve and represent the citizens of the city. I hope you agree with me when I say we need to ensure that our meetings are efficient, effective, and professional. Our council meetings can be focused on only one topic, the business of our municipal government as specified in our city charter.
Point of, point of order, point of order. We at the organization of city council, y'all just arguing about other stuff, so let's get on with the business, please, and do your speech on a special privilege. Let's follow the agenda, Ms. Fields, this is getting a little much.
Mr. Mays, I haven't called the rest of the meeting to order, and I have one more statement I'd like to make, and I would like your-
That ain't, that ain't part of the agenda, you can do that next time, point of order.
You're out of order.
Point of order, you gotta recognize my point of order.
Mr. Mays, what is your point of order?
The agenda says that after Ms. Brown presides, and we do the organizational for president, it say that you oughta call the meeting to order and proceed with the organization of city council. Ain't nothing in there about no speech. So proceed with the agenda, that's my point of order, that's your duty.
Your point of duty is denied.
Okay, I appeal it. I appeal that you won't call it to order as the agenda said, I appeal.
Is there a second to Mr. Mays's appeal?
Madam President.
Go ahead, turn.
Yes, Ms. Winfrey?
I second that motion.
Appeal has been, uh, supported. I would like to say that I only had one more sentence, and it is usual for the council president when first elected and the council vice president when first elected to be able to say just a few words. I had one more sentence before I was interrupted, one more sentence to finish, and then I was going to call the order of, uh, the rest of the meeting. So, I would hope that my colleagues would agree with me that we have always given the elect, newly-elected president and vice president a moment or two to say a couple of remarks. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, it's all about latitude. I've asked for latitude for years, and then had vice presidency took, finance chair took wrongfully, I'm suing. I've asked for latitude to be able to speak and not be muted by you, cause you said it wasn't no rules. I asked for latitude to hear from the public and had a motion, and y'all voted contrary to Roberts' rules, like it can't be no motion, and y'all embarrassed, Ms. Brown, to me. I'm in the middle of a, a-
Mr. Mays?
Why you interrupting me? I'm out of order, I'm-
You are out of order, please cease talking.
I'll appeal the ruling that I'm out of order.
You cannot appeal, we already have appeal on the floor.
Well, that's the only resource I got.
Mr. Mays, please keep, stop talking. You are to cease talking or be removed from the meeting, and I don't want to do that. Cease talking. I'm going to read from Roberts' rules, because we don't have a council rule that speaks for this, but we do have Roberts' rules. It's in Dequorum in Debate, on page three ninety-three. Referring from speaking adversely on a prior action not pending. In debate, a member cannot reflect adversely on any prior act of the society that has not been pending unless the motion to reconsider, rescind, or amend is pending, or unless he intends to conclude his remarks by making a giving notice of one of these motions. You're out of order, Mr. Mays. Would you like to continue speaking correctly in your appeal?
Yeah, yeah, can you direct me what I'm speaking on and what the appeal was like, and try my Michigan state knowledge to stay on point? Can the chair or president refresh my memory of what I should be speaking on, so I can even see if I were right? Can you do that?
Janelle, could you please, um, repeat?
There's an appeal of the ruling of the chair for not calling the meeting to order.
Okay, and so my position is the same. The Rules Committee Chair ain't had a Rules Committee meeting in two years. And we fixing to get to the business that y'all wanted to get to of organization. You wanted to give a speech, I don't know if you had one sentence, two sentences, or twenty sentences. I just got tired of it and said it was out of order. Now you trying to jam me up because somebody seconded the appeal of your ruling. And now we discussing whether or not you should call the meeting to order or keep giving speeches. We don't know what kind of speech you finna give, we just want the meeting called order. And you trying to convince them four or five or six who vote with you to let you and everybody else make a speech. You want latitude, but you wanna treat me like my word. And the people I represent don't need no latitude. I know how to talk, I know how to stay germane, Tito. I'm not gonna be voting in favor with you on this, I'm the one who appealed. And you shouldn't be interrupting, trying to throw me out in your first five minutes of presidency. Give me latitude, don't give me the pranger.
Is there any other discussion on the appeal?
Madam President.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes. I voted, uh, to, uh, uh, I supported the, the appeal because we just got done with your saying that in order for Councilman Mays to say what he needed to say or what he wanted to say was out of order. Now we're at the same point of, of, uh, organization of the city council, and I wanna hear what you have to say as president of the council, and I wanna congratulate you. But again, if the rules are going to be implemented, they have to be implemented across the board. If, if him wanting to do something that is not normally done, and it's out of order, then your speech, in my opinion, is out of order until we have, uh, voted on a, a, um, vice president. Now that might sound petty, but then again, it's this council that has created, uh, uh, who we are and what we do. So I would just like to see us be across the board. I want to hear your, your acceptance speech. I'm, I wanna congratulate you as well, but I think we still need to be across the board. That's why I voted against, uh, 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 that's why I supported it, because again, he called a point of order, because we're not at the point where speeches are to be made. We're still at the point, in my opinion, of the organization of the city council. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Would anyone else like to speak on the appeal? Anyone who's not spoken? There is no further discussion, roll call. Please.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
No, hold up, point of order, you gotta rotate that, I shouldn't have been first in there, that's why I didn't pay attention. You gotta rotate, I voted first before. You gotta keep up with that rotation.
Call Mr. Davis.
Okay.
Call Mr. Davis.
First.
Yes.
Okay, my bad.
Mr. Davis, you say yes?
No.
You saying no?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Field? Ms. Field?
No, I'm being, no, I'm the appeal.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Oh.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
No. The appeal, her ruling failed.
It's three yes, six no.
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
A yes supports the chair, a no supports the appeal. So you gotta now call it to order, because the no's won. I voted with him. That mean your ruling fails to be able to give a speech.
I disagree with you, Mr. Mays.
Well, point of order, I'll appeal it, I'm telling you, I work, yeah, this is it. Point of order.
There's an appeal on the floor to the ruling of the chair.
No.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Um, this is, um, Councilwoman Galloway, I just want you to know who it was, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It was my understanding that I was voting no on the appeal, which meant I agreed with the ruling of the chair. I believe it was the other members' understanding who voted that by voting no, they were voting against the appeal with the ruling of the chair. So now we have another point of order and another appeal. So, to really clarify this, to clarify this appeal, if you vote no, you're voting against the appeal and with the ruling of the chair. Is there any other discussion on the appeal?
I do, Madam, Madam President, congratulations. Um, normally-
Thank you, Ms. Galloway.
Thank you. Normally, when the chair makes a ruling and the appeal is done, the motion or the, the chair normally says, if you support the decision of the chair, you say yes. If you don't support the decision of the chair, you say no. And so unfortunately, there was some confusion about the normal process, but a no means you don't support the chair's ruling. And so in that vote, there was six no and three yes, which means that the decision of the chair failed. So unfortunately, it, it appears that those that voted no unknowingly didn't realize that they in fact were saying no to the ruling of the chair.
No, sir.
Um, Ms. Worthing, and then Mr. Mays? And then Mr. Griggs? Ms. Worthing?
That was my understanding. We were, uh, voting no, uh, for the appeal. There was no confirming, if you vote yes, this, this is what happens, if you vote no, this is what happens. Um, and in that case, the people who voted yes voted wrong as well for their own case. So, I don't know if we need to do the vote again and make it clear. Uh, I don't think it would be right to just let it go if, if the vote came out wrong. Uh, that's not the will of council. So, I, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of the chair. Uh, we know, and as Ms. Galloway stated, we know what the will of-
Uh, we know, and as Ms. Galloway stated, we know what the will of council was. We, we were not in support of this appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Uh, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam Chair and to this council, it's not my fault that after years and months and meetings, I'm the senior councilman. My job is to learn stuff. We handling multi-millions of these residents' dollars, dealing with police, like this is what we do. Y'all picking presidents and chairs and y'all wondering how long meetings gonna last and will we look like debaggers in public is who you put in leadership positions, is who have brains. I'm knowing when...
You're out of order. Please remain germane to the appeal that is on the floor. All that other dialogue is not germane to the appeal.
Well, the brain to know how to vote is germane. And I'm knowing to vote no when I see that I'm finna win. And so what I appealed was your ruling to give a speech, and you felt you could do it. You even alluded to what people done did in the past years. I know what people done did in the past years. They ain't been throwing people out. They been giving them latitude. But when you don't wanna give me latitude, I'ma hold you to the letter of the law. These rules is law. Anybody who been on this council, no. If the Chair ruled our appeal and you vote no, guess what? You disagreeing with the ruling of the Chair. Six no. So that mean when this is over, you call this meeting to order. Cause this appeal is because you steady, don't know how to count who wins, yes or no. And so I do. And I know they was saying, "Why he voting with us?" If I had have voted first, that would've give y'all a sign on how to vote. Y'all voted first. You messed up. It done been ruled on. Now call the meeting to order and get on with the Vice President vote. Now I guess I'ma vote in this one. I guess I'ma vote in this one. I ain't gonna tell you.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, um, I actually voted no because I agreed with the appeal. So I, I too always understood that if you vote yes, you agree with the Chair's ruling, and no means you agree with the appeal. So I understood that, and I think usually maybe things should be stated what a yes and no vote means beforehand. Um, so I, I do think Mr. Mays is right. However, I don't understand why other council colleagues voted yes, even if they disagreed with it, just because they thought that that was what they should. So I think a lot of other, I just would like to see if they gotta redo the vote. Um, my vote was meant to be a no, um, with that understanding, and it's what I wanna clarify, but maybe the vote does need to be re, redone. Uh, I think it can have the same result. Um, however, I just think that, uh, it should be redone because clearly others voted, voted the wrong way. So, or, so just to be clear, this vote now is to appeal the decision? Or can you restate what the, what the vote is right now?
Janelle, could you please repeat?
I'm sorry, Mr. Field, I missed that.
I'm sorry?
I, I missed what you said.
Could you, could you repeat what this appeal is about?
It is about, uh, the vote and how the no's support the yeses and, and Mr. Mays appealed.
Okay. Thank you, Janelle. Is there any other, anyone else that would like? Are you sure, Mr. Gray?
No, because, I mean, I don't really see, I, I think that as a large, I think other maybe council members voted wrong, but I do think the vote was, was finalized, and I think that's the way it should stand, um, by the, the no meaning that you can't proceed and then we would just move on to the next, move on to the next thing. So I do, I don't, I don't really get, um, if the no's are supposed to be yeses unless we're gonna redo the vote, um, which I think could also satisfy people, but if not, I think we can just move on to the next agenda item, taking the Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Anyone who has not spoken on the appeal like to speak? Then I'll finish. I want to apologize because I actually agree with Ms. Galloway. And, you know, I've not shared for a while. So you talk about having a little latitude. Number one, I made the mistake, I did not repeat, and I should have clarified what a yes vote meant and what a no vote meant. So I believe we do have the option of redoing that appeal or frankly, moving on. And I do have one final sentence I would like to say, and I will say that, uh, as we get into the meeting somewhere. And, um, and in the future, I'll make sure to clarify because Ms. Galloway is correct. It used to be if you said yes, you agreed with the ruling of the Chair, and if you said no, you didn't agree with the ruling of the Chair. And I did not clarify that or make that clear. So my apologies to this council. So, um, I'm not even sure on this particular appeal, what we're appealing, frankly. And Janelle, that wasn't clear to me what you explained. We get into these appeals and then points of order and appeals, and it gets very confusing. So I really appreciate you taking very good notes, um, in case we're not clear on this for clarification's sake. So once more, for clarification's sake, Janelle, can you tell me what this appeal is about?
I think it might be better coming from Mr. Mays, cause like you said, I got a little confused too.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Mays?
I'm appealing your interpretation of who won the appeal. You thought that the no's meant that I wasn't gonna win, that you had to go to the next order. The no's meant I did win. If it had have been yes, you would have been able to keep giving your speech. So once you ruled and interpreted that vote wrong and was gonna move on, I said I appeal. You was trying to call me out on what I said, I appeal. So I appealed your interpretation of what yes and no meant on the first appeal. So if you vote yes on this one, you agree with your interpretation. If you vote no, then that's what Santino and I'm, and others are saying, "Let's move on with the agenda." It ain't no latitude to give speeches. So a yes, you get to give, you, 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 your, your interpretation, even though it's wrong, would be right. Everybody should vote no on this one.
Well, I said it was safe. So if you vote yes, you're agreeing with the Chair. If you vote no, you agree with the appeal. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. Field?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
That's nine, no. One, zero, yes, nine, no.
Zero, yes, nine, no. That means the appeal wins, and I am going to now call this meeting to order. The next order of business is the organization of the city council for council vice president. Please roll call, please, for elections of the city council vice president.
Mr. Mays?
Mr. Davis? You want me to continue with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Mr. Davis?
Uh, point of order? Point of order? Uh, Madam Clerk, according to this agenda, you just conduct the election of the President, but not the council vice president.
Point of information. I think she's just doing roll call.
In the past, Ms. Field, I've, I've done both.
Okay. Could you clarify, Ms. Brown? Were you just doing roll call on the, on the vote?
On the, I, I'm just doing roll call on the Vice President.
Oh, thank you. I misunderstood. Pardon me. Proceed.
Mr. Davis?
Maurice Davis.
Mr. Davis?
Ms. Fields?
Maurice Davis.
Ms. Winfrey Carter? Monica Galloway? Mr. Winfrey?
Monica Galloway.
Oh, God, yeah.
Ms. Galloway?
Monica Galloway.
Mr. Briggs?
Councilman Davis.
Ms. Worthing?
Councilman Davis?
Mr. Mays?
Mays.
There's, uh, five for Mr. Davis, three for Ms. Galloway, and one for Mr. Mays. Mr. Davis is the Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Congratulations, Mr. Davis. Would you care to say anything?
Point of order. We'll later on in the meeting, later on in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next on the agenda is organization of the city council, other officers, and committees. Um, I actually would like a bit of time. We don't, we've not, uh, been having committee meetings. I would like a bit of time to think about this and give other council members an opportunity to contact me and to tell me if they would like to chair a committee and to say which committee. So I'm going to, um, give aside that decision for the moment, but I will be making that, uh, within the month.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Monica Galloway be finance chair and I so move.
Mr. Mays? I can't accept that motion.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
My agenda, the council rules says that the, the President can make those appointments unless otherwise directed by the council. And so my motion is in order, and if you rule it out of order and don't ask for a second, Madam new President, I'ma appeal.
Give me a moment, Mr. Mays. I'm going to read that rule. Can you direct me to the rule number?
About when you get to floor, can you make a motion? You the President. I got time. Remember, I don't leave, I don't leave meetings. I want you in the end.
Please stop talking. Please stop talking. You've had a point of order. I'd like to rule on it, but I'd like to look at the rules before I rule on it. So I'm asking you politely, can you direct me to that rule?
I'm telling you politely, you the President, find it. You looking to see when you give a person the floor, can they make a motion?
Please stop talking while I look at the rules. Okay, I found the rule, Rule 4.1, under committee. It says, "The President, unless otherwise directed by the council, shall appoint all committee chairs and vice chairs for a one-year term, which shall end on the second Monday in November." So I surmise from that that you're saying that your motion to elect someone is finance chair constitutes unless otherwise directed by the council?
May I?
Not yet. I'll, I'll consider, I'll consider that as otherwise directed. There's been a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and supported that Monica Galloway be made finance chair. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I have some. I get five minutes worth if you give me the floor.
Mr. Mays? You have a floor?
You know, I watched the presidential election. I watched the House and the Senate and Washington, and that's what this is. When you got Democrats and Republicans or whatever the two factions may be, you try to get people on important positions. I done watched this council in between me, Ms. Galloway, maybe you or whatever. I don't know what you got in mind or what y'all got in mind, but I'm open, honest, and public. We will see what the vote got in mind when we vote on this motion. That was a proper motion, and if this one go, we might look at governmental ops and legislative too. Maybe we'll wait, but this is the third most important position, and I don't know what y'all done promised, cause seem like y'all came in here locked and loaded, didn't wanna discuss nothing. And coincidentally, everybody voting in the block. Let's see what they do with finance chair. I'ma reserve the rest of my time and see who say what. I'll be voting yes for Monica Galloway for finance chair. Let's see what y'all do.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you for indulging, Madam Chair. I think that will be a awesome choice if Ms. Galloway, she have the expertise. Only thing I would pray, that, you know, and, and I know she's fair and I have conversation, whether we agree, don't, sometimes don't agree, but when it come to the finance of this community, that is the pulse. That is the pulse. And all I would pray, I know she can handle that because she's an excellent finance chair. I would pray that she would work with the administration, cause I'm so tired of the bickering, like we done spent all this time right now to just pick a President and a Vice President. Work with and get this city moving while we got a chance. We got a pandemic on our hands. But I know Monica Galloway is more than capable, and I have no prejudice, so people quit calling me a rubber stamp, cause Maurice move and act on his own accord. I have no prejudice, zero percent, but against no colleague. But Ms. Galloway, give it all you got to move this city on one accord with administration well as this body, and I guarantee I whole highly support you with all I get. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Worthing?
Yeah.
Ms. Worthing, you have a floor?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not enthusiastic about that at all. One, uh, it's been customary that the President chooses, and in fact, when Ms. Galloway was President, uh, last year, she immediately decided who was going to do what. No consideration for anyone else but what was pre-decided beforehand. And, uh, I will not support this. Ms. Galloway has proven that she cannot work with others. She is constantly rude to staff. She would not work with the administration. She cannot work with those in finance. Uh, she's constantly combative. And so I will support no, and it's nothing personal. It's because I want someone who will do the work without a negative attitude and agenda. And, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Uh, Mr., Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say is, um, I, I have no doubt that Ms. Galloway can, uh, do the job of finance chair. I don't know if you've done it before, and I, uh, know that she definitely... that she's definitely educated in how municipal government works. However, um, I think it is precedent that the- the council president originally chooses the finance, there's all three other chairs additionally. Now, if they don't work out, I've seen it in the past, we have changed chairs and leadership, which is totally understandable, uh, but we had to do an amendment to, uh, council rule, uh, so that to happen, um, I do remember that being the issue too, so I would not support a decision made from anybody else right now at first, uh, until the president decides that they want, if they don't work out, I have no problem with- with changing the way leadership is operating on the council. Right now, I won't be voting in favor of this motion, because I think the president deserves to get her opportunity to, uh, choose to keep the elected positions, so, yeah, I think she's followed by absolutely, uh, however, do I think it's the president, I do not, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Uh, I'm- who's speaking?
Councilwoman Galloway.
Ms. Galloway, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you. Um, I just wanna say to my colleagues, Councilman Mays, first of all, thank you, um, I- I wasn't expecting that, but I appreciate, um, your confidence. Councilman Davis, I do appreciate, and, um, I will work with the administration, and I have been working with the administration, and as a matter of fact, Mayor Neely and I have been in some meetings, um, where we've actually had people in the meetings, and, um, we were moving forward. I will say to Mr. Guerra that, um, I think that he really needs to revisit the record, because when the council made a motion to change who the finance chair was, it was this very Rule 4.1 that was exercised, and we did not have to change anything. And so, um, Mr. Davis, if I do earn your, um, vote, I- I will do everything within my power to move this community forward, I believe that, I love this community, I serve on this council because I love this community, and I think that I am, um, versed in it, I think that I've made enough of the relationships on the state level, um, and so, um, I hope my colleagues will support me and give me an opportunity, and I can say that, um, I will do my best. Thank you for that, Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Um, no one else for the first round, we'll move to the second round, Mr. Mays?
I would suppose that you didn't have nothing in the first round, and that's fine, but Mr. Guerra, that's exactly the rule, you already moved me and put the finance chair the majority of the council wanted. You gotta be consistent with these rules, unless you gonna make me the chairman of the rules committee, and I can get some stuff in order and make it easy for everybody, so I hear your argument, I'm just watching the boat. God bless the citizens of the city of Platte.
Any other discussion? I would like to say something. I would like to say something, I guess I did not take the first round, and then I'll recognize, I believe, Mr. Davis. I would like to say that every other council president-
Point of- point of order, Madam President.
What's your point of order, Mr. Mays?
Seem like you sacrificed the first round of yours, so let him do his second round and take all yours in the second round last, that's really you the president now.
I'm aware of that, Mr. Mays, thank you, I will continue. The- every other president has been accorded the courtesy of, as per our rules, of choosing the committee chairs. I don't know why this time should be any different. The last time where we actually voted on a cha- finance chair, it was only because the original chair who was appointed had to be removed.
Point of information, point of information. Did I have to be removed? That's my point of information, you recognizing? Point of information, um, to the speaker you, did I have to be removed?
Yes, Mr. Mays, you had to be removed for abuse of the authority of the chair. Now, I'm going to continue, and please, I would appreciate not having any interruptions if possible. I would like to say that while Ms. Galloway does have financial expertise, I would like to say courtesy that other presidents have been given, including Ms. Galloway, Mr. Winfrey before her, while this present council has been in office, I would- I stated that I would like some time to think about this, in order to hear from other council members, um, their thoughts and ideas, and their willingness, uh, to serve what they're interested in, and if they would like to chair at all, or, uh, perhaps they don't choose to chair. But I will be voting no on this, it is saying nothing against Ms. Galloway, it's for the principle that the president of council has always been allowed to choose the chairs of the committees. Mr. Davis?
Thank you for indulging, Madam Chair, I like to say this to Ms. Galloway. I- I'm very confident in all your ability, Ms. Galloway. We got different personalities, and that's what how God made us. But at this time, we got a new presidential administration, the day need to be the day we reconstruct the council, as well as our direction and our history of being a council show. I will be supporting Ms. Galloway as finance chair, let me tell you why. Because any funding that come available under this new presid- presidency or the state, we wanna be on one accord with the administration, so finally, the residents deserve what they got, they done got poison and everything else, it took us four, I'm on my fourth year, and I wanna be successful, if I get voted out of that chair, I wanna show that Maurice had leadership in me. I'm not a follower, I'm not a rubber stamp. I got all the confidence in you, Ma- Ms. Galloway, 'cause you can do this, and I want you to do it, but I'm not playing games. Now, we got all of this bickering out the way, let's work with administration our last year, and let's get some city business done. Thank you for indulging, Madam Chair, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on a second round?
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
Thank you. Uh, I too have, uh, the utmost confidence in, uh, Councilwoman Galloway's ability to- to serve as finance chair, I think she did a wonderful job when she was, uh, when she was finance chair before, and also serving as vice president of the council. But, uh, Councilwoman Fields does have a point, uh, since I've been on this council, the- the president of the council has had, this council has given the president of the council the opportunity to choose whom he or she, uh, wants, uh, to place in those, uh, in those, chairing those committees, and I don't think that she should be not be denied that. A- a- again, we need to be across the board. If it was afforded the other council presidents, it should be afforded to, uh, Councilwoman Fields as well, that's-
Point of information.
What is your point of information, Mr. Mays?
To you to the speaker, shouldn't we be afforded our whole year across the board and not take it from me? Across the board is across the board.
Madam- Madam-
Mr. Winfrey, you have the floor.
Okay, in responding to my colleague, uh, and you said that should it be, should it be taken from you? No, it shouldn't be taken from you, I don't think anything should be taken from anybody, but there was some issues, uh, Councilman Mays, that had to be addressed, uh, or that needed to be addressed, so I don't- I don't think that it was taken from you.
Across the board.
Mr. Mays, you're out of order.
We can have a discussion about that, but, uh, I believe in treating everybody, it doesn't matter who it is, fairly. That's my point. Thank you, Madam-
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I do, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Councilwoman Galloway. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Moore, first I recognize Councilman Briggs and then Ms. Galloway. Councilman Briggs?
Uh, yeah. Uh, on this, uh, particular motion, I'm- I'm voting in the way that it would be the council president's choice for who the finance chair is. I would imagine that Ms. Fields would appoint Ms. Galloway, but, uh, I don't know, I think we're just slowing things down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs, Ms. Galloway?
So, Ms. Fields, I do have a question for you, as you are going to, and since my colleagues have expressed, I- I want to say on the public record, that I would be interested in being the finance chair, and so, and if you're saying that you want somebody to get with you, I'm getting with you on the public record in the first beginning of your administration, and so what will you be looking at when you're making the decision to appoint somebody as the finance chair, the governmental op- well, specifically finance chair? What are gonna be your qualifications, what are the things that you're going to be looking at, were you currently in an audit? And so, I just was hoping that you, since you're saying that you want some time to think about it, um, I- I just wanna to- to say that, I wanna give you the chance to, um, choose who you would like as well, and so, I- but I would like for you to say what you are going to be looking at, what are going to be some of the decisions that are going to be made, and I just want to, um, dismantle this notion that I'm- I have not worked with the administration, and so, um, I just wanna thank again my colleagues, um, Councilman Winfrey, I appreciate what you're saying, and I know that you're adamant about that, but I want this council to remember that when Councilman Mays was removed as the president of the council, I was not given the ability to do that, that this council exercised their right under that motion, and so I appreciate you guys' time, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway, any- any other discussion? I would like to say finally that, in response to Ms. Galloway, I would like to hear city council members a chance to apply for the position. I believe that experience and knowledge are very important, and Ms. Galloway may end up being my choice, if this vote fails, or she may not, but I think it's important to give all council members a chance to put themselves forward, and I would appreciate the courtesy that was given to Mr. Winfrey, thank you for emphasizing that, and to you yourself, Ms. Galloway, of the president choosing the committee chair. Hearing no further discussion, uh, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Guerra?
Excuse me, I don't think, my phone, it's- it's difficult to hear, I don't know if Ms. Worthing had asked for the floor.
Yeah, I-
Under discussion, I did only- I did only ask one-
I- I don't want discussion, I just wanted you to clarify the vote, please.
This vote is to vote in Councilwoman Galloway as finance chair. If you vote yes, then she becomes chair, if you vote no, then the president is to choose the chair. Roll call, please.
Mr. Guerra?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
The Briggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is, uh, three yes, six no, fails.
The motion fails, I would like to move on, the agenda says-
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
Uh, Madam President, get in the habit of calling the vote, restating the numbers and everything, and then you move on.
Mr. Mays, I thank you for your assistance, okay? But there is not, excuse me, there's someone that needs to be muted. I don't know who said shut up, but that certainly isn't appropriate, can you ensure Janelle that that person is muted? I'm really on the- the point of order. Well, I appreciate Mr. Mays' willingness and assistance, really, a point of order is only a breach of the rules, and there is no breach of the rules here, but I will accommodate him this time, and we try to remember to do that. It failed, it was six no, voting Ms. Galloway in as finance chair, and three yes. The chair will now choose, the president will now choose the chairs of the committee. So, I would like to move on to the roll call, I'm going to-
Point of order, Madam, point of order, Madam, um-
The roll call, the roll call
Point of order, Madam President.
You're not recognized, Mr. Mays, I am-
I'm being ruled out of chair.
Is there an appeal to the ruling of the chair, is there a second?
I support that.
And you are?
Councilwoman Galloway?
Councilwoman Galloway, thank you. If you can identify yourself, I- I can't always tell, my phone is old, and I can't hear as well as I could, I think I need to investigate getting a new phone. So, the appeal has been, uh, supported. Is there a- so, the appeal is, as I understand it, I wanted to move on to the agenda, then I had already stated that the next item of the agenda was roll call, and, uh, Mr. Mays called a point of order, uh, while I was trying to move on with my agenda. There was no reason to have a point of order, I didn't breach any rules, I have the right to move on to the agenda, and I had moved on to the agenda. So, uh, is there any other discussion on the appeal?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, I said- You ready?
Mr. Mays, you have the floor.
Yeah, I said point of order, a point of order is always in order, and your job is to have everything stopped and say what's your point of order. You said you wasn't gonna recognize it, you don't even know what it was, I didn't even state it. I was gonna, I probably won't do it now, but I was gonna make a motion that for me to be governmental operations, that's the next imported committee, and we was on that. So I was saying point of order, 'cause you figure when you won on finance chair, that was it. Now, I might not have did it for all four committees, but when I say point of order, you out of order, when you don't say, what's your point, everything stopped. So I appeal your ruling to ignore a privileged motion, a point of order, when you were setting out the president, you was all on Ms. Galloway about point of order, the appeal of the chair, you an evil, so, you the- you the president now, and it's diff- more difficult when you sitting there than you know when I was chairing meetings. You gave people the business, so you gotta brush up and get sharp. It ain't no dictatorship, a point of order is a privileged motion. I'll appeal your ruling to just say out blatantly, I'm not gonna recognize it. I'll be voting no, because you dead wrong, you got to recognize it.
Madam Chair?
President?
Ms. Worthing? Ms. Worthing?
Point of order, President Field.
Excuse me, I'm giving Ms. Galloway, uh, the next, uh, floor, yes, Ms. Galloway?
Thank you so much, President Field, I only supported that because you were the rule maker, and a privilege-
and a privileged motion cannot be ignored. And so, when you told him that you were not gonna recognize him, you actually violated two things. One, you violated the fact that it is a privileged motion. It's not about whether you know whether or not you were out of order or not. It was you have to recognize him. But the second thing about that, President Fields, is that in your rule that we adopted as a council, it says if a point of order is done, and you don't cease talking, that you shall be removed. And so, I'm just asking that we would be fair. And in this point of order, this appeal of the decision of the Chair, every councilperson on this council, Ms. Fields, President Fields, not it say, including yourself, to vote against yourself because you know for a fact that a privileged motion cannot be ignored, whether you agree with it or not. You have to listen to what it is to find out if there's any weight in it. And Ms. Fields, as you go forth as the President, I have no doubt that your leadership will excel. But part of being the leader is not shutting each other down. And so, if you're going to show us the way that it should be, I'm just asking that you would be fair. And in this decision, when you said, "I don't recognize you," cease talking, it was blatantly out of order. Thank you.
Ms. Worthing?
Here we are. How long has it been? Almost two hours. We gotta vote for President in. We gotta vote for Vice President in. And that's it. Uh, people are unhappy. They're not President, and- and their person didn't win. They don't have their perceived power to-
Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
There is no point of order. There is no point of order.
See, she's out of order. She could be the-
Everyone, everyone stop talking, please. What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Now, Ms. Fields, you just went in and read Roberts' Rules to Councilman Mays about not being germane and speaking adversely, but you are not saying the same thing to Ms. Worthing. She is not being germane, and you haven't once told her that she's out of order based on what you read into the record. And she didn't cease talking, which according to the council rules, she shall be removed. And so, if we're going to be fair, she's got to be fair. Nobody is upset. Decisions are made. This is our democracy. But she can't be blatantly rude and interruptive and not be germane. So, are you- I'm- that's my point of order. What is your ruling on that?
Your point of order is denied. And the reason, the reason- There's an appeal- There is an appeal to the decision of the Chair. Is there support for that appeal? Um, um, wait, wait just a moment. Wait just a moment. I believe we already have an appeal on the floor, so we can't have a second point of order or an appeal on the floor until the first appeal is decided. That's Roberts' Rules. So, that's why I'm denying your point of order.
You a- you acknowledged it, Ms. Fields.
I'm denying your point of order.
Ms. Fields, Madam President. Madam President.
Talking, I'm not recognizing anyone unless they're speaking on the first appeal.
One oh, one oh, order.
There is no point of order during an appeal. Ms. Worthing, please continue.
Thank you. That was what I was saying at the beginning. Um, I know that Ms. Galloway is very combative. Uh, it's- it's quite clear, uh, that there is some, um, anger there. However, I hope we don't continue this. I really don't. It- it's quite apparent what's happening. Uh, there's appeals and points of orders and, um, getting angry right away. Ms. Fields just became President. Uh, maybe in your strategy, you should've thought, "Maybe I'll wait a little while before giving Ms. Fields some trouble." Because when you do it right away, it's quite apparent your strategy. We're unhappy, we're gonna continue this, and then you're gonna make the rest of us stay until midnight, 1:00 AM, because it's gonna be point of order appeal. So, my vote is, uh, in favor of the Chair. I'd like to conduct this meeting and conduct city business and not be an embarrassment to my city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Any other discussion on the appeal? Is there any other discussion on the appeal? I would like to end by saying, this appeal is because I tried to move on with the roll call and did not recognize when Mr. Mays called a point of order. I'm gonna refer my colleagues to read up on Roberts' Rules about dilatory motions. And that includes doing points of order that are meant to just obstruct the progress of business. My whole tension of not recognizing that point of order was because I knew I hadn't broken any rule by proceeding with what's on the agenda, which was roll call for the meeting. We haven't even gotten that far. And that's not doing an effective or efficient meeting. So, I wish my colleagues, and- and I think when we get to have the opportunity of a Rules Committee, I would like to really look at a section on dilatory motions, which is an abuse of point of order and/or a point of information. Because that tactic by certain members is simply being used for the purpose of obstructing the purpose of the meeting, which is to conduct municipal business. And that's why these meetings end up being so long. That's why we don't even get to public speaking, important issues like the executive session and all the other resolutions and ordinances that are on the city. So, if you vote yes, you agree with the Chair. If you vote no, you agree with Mr. Mays. Roll call, please.
Point of order.
I've already called roll call. You cannot call-
Point of order, point of order. You don't agree with me. You agree with the rules of recognizing a point of order. Don't word it like that. That ain't what it is.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Gara?
Yes.
The vote is, uh, five yes, four no.
Five yes, agree with the Chair, four no to Mr. Mays' appeal. The motion failed. We are moving on to roll call of City Council. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Gara?
Present.
Ms. Fields?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Mr. Griggs?
Present.
Ms. Worthing?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Ms. Winfrey Carter, would you lead it in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Winfrey Carter. We now come to prayer or blessing. Would anyone like a moment of silence?
Madam President, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
Yes, Ms. Galloway.
I ask for a moment of silence for the passing of Bishop Harry R. Jackson Jr. and his family.
Madam Chair.
And also, um, for the, um, Bogart family. Um, Anthony Bogart, um, his stepfather passed. If we could have a moment of silence for them as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Who is that?
Councilman Davis.
Uh, Councilman Davis.
I'd like the, uh, moment of silence for Bishop Rance Allen passing, um, earlier, well, last week now, but we haven't had a council meeting, but Bishop Rance Allen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else?
Santino here.
Mr. Gara?
Yeah, I'd like a moment of silence, uh, for Lydia, uh, Gara, and the Gara family and the Reeves family for her recent passing.
Thank you, Mr. Gara. Anyone else? I'd also like us to take a moment of reflection to think about all the people in this country and on this planet that are being affected by this horrible pandemic. Those that were ill, those who have passed away. So, we'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, I'm going to read the Procedures on Conducting Electronic Public Meetings. All boards and commissions must adhere to all laws established under the Michigan Compiled Laws and in accordance with the revisions to the Open Meetings Act adopted in Senate Bill 1108, as passed on October 13th, 2020, and signed into law on October 16th, 2020.
Madam President? Madam President?
Yes, who's speaking? Davina.
Yes. Um, I just wanna point out, in light of the Procedures on Conducting Electronic Public Meetings, part of that is our member contact information, which we have to add to agendas. And I just wanna point out that Mr. Mays' phone number is incorrect on the agenda today. It will be corrected in the future. Um, as we all know, he, uh, shares his personal cellphone number, and, um, that is 8109224860. So, it is incorrect on the agenda, but it will be corrected for the future, and that is part of the new procedures. We have to have that on the agenda. I just wanted to point that out.
Point of order, that part of the agenda was overlooked by Madam President.
Mr. Mays, thank you for pointing that out. Uh, now, I'd like to move on to the reading of Disorderly Persons, City Code Section 31-10. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of City Code Section 31-10, disorderly conduct, assault, and battery in disordered persons, and will be subject to arrest per misdeed. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from meetings. Now, we're at, uh, request for changes and or additions to agenda. Does anyone have any requests?
President Fields, this is-
Madam Chair.
I- I'm sorry, you were garbled. This is who?
President Ga- I mean, this- President Fields, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
Okay, Ms. Galloway, you have a floor.
I would- I would ask that we have public comment immediately following any of the changes and or additions to the agenda, so prior to executive closed session. As well as, I would ask that special orders would happen after the master resolution.
Any other additions or changes to agenda?
Yeah, Madam- Madam, uh, President.
Yes, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I'm Davina. Already did it, but I wanna reemphasize that that member contact information on the agenda, it need to be changed. That number, my cell number is 8109224860. So, Ms. Galloway, I guess you're saying that not only public comment, but council response, public comment and council responses to come after the request and changes and before executive session. And then you want the, um, special orders to come. Did you say after resolutions?
Madam President, may I respond?
Yes, Ms. Galloway?
Yes, sir.
No, I want them- I want them to come after, um, before at least one of them. I want 200467. You requested, Ms. Galloway, that, um, the, uh, Black person that we know of, Duval Murda, be here. I want that special order. I don't know if I want it to come before or after public speaking, but I'd move that, um, by itself. The rest of them can come where you want them to come. But I want that to come be- be, um, right af- right after or before public speaking. We can talk about it when we get there on the discussion.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Griggs?
I'd like to recommend that we keep public speaking where it presently is on the agenda. Thank you.
Will others request for changes or additions to agenda?
Madam President, let me read about this executive session right quick and see who it is, if you can hesitate for thirty or forty seconds.
I can, but meanwhile, are there any other request for changes or additions to agenda?
Uh, Madam President?
Mr. Mays?
Do you, Ms. Field, that this agenda says an executive session for the purposes of updating the City Council on the status of water litigation? Is it people waiting here in the wings?
Yes.
Okay, well, let them- I hope they'll at least wait till we hear from the public. It's been a while since we've been in session. We waiting on them, and they can wait on us. Okay, I'm- I- I don't have no more, um, changes.
Okay, we'll handle them one by one. Um, Ms. Galloway has asked for a change to have public comment and I believe council response, um, prior to the executive session. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I support that. I'm gonna vote yes. You know, I had been wanting to hear from the public. The public have been waiting long enough. That's who we work for. That's who decides our fate. So, I wanna hear from them. They know what's happening, and they keep up with stuff. And, um, they shouldn't have to wait till we go into unknown how long executive session if we go. But the point is this, I'll be voting yes. Go right to public speaker.
Is there any other discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I'll be voting no on this. Uh, we need to go straight to executive session, just the way it is. Public speaking won't have any bearing at all on what happens in the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Any other discussions? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Galloway? Yes. Ms. Galloway? Yes, ma'am. Yes, but yeah, a yes vote for public speaking.
Okay, uh, Mr. Briggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Gara?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is, uh, eight yes, one no for public speaking before executive session.
Thank you. Eight yes, one no. We will have public speaking and council response prior to executive close session. The second request was moved by Ms. Galloway. That was to have special orders after the resolutions. I believe that she stated all special orders. So, uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Uh, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I think I made it clear that one special order about blight and Mr. Murdock, I wanted it up at the top. I don't want that blight issue going down to the bottom. It's an issue with residents, and I think we know the intent. Now, how you do this vote, because the way you were in the vote, if we do all of them, there's no respect for my agenda change. I don't know if you do the one that I separated first, so I'll make a motion. If Ms. Galloway through you, to Ms. Galloway, Ms. Galloway, do you mind if I do an amendment to your original motion at this time?
No, sir. I thought- I thought that you had the right to separate it. I thought it was gonna be- oh, I'm sorry, Madam President, is it okay if I, um, respond?
Yes, Ms. Galloway.
Um, Councilman Mays, I thought that- that you were doing a separation and that it would not be included since you spoke after me. I thought it would be separated and voted on separately.
And so in effect, this is, I guess, what I look at, then I'll make the, um, you know, polite amendment if it ain't going with what you had intended. So what I'll do, and then we'll see if yours is moved. I'll be voting to move the rest of them, and then the one that I'm finna do the formal motion to, um, separate by amendment, then, um, we'll vote on that and see what the pleasure is, you know, and, um, we'll do an amendment that if it, you know, ain't passed separately, it'll just go with the rest of them at that proper time. So I see a way to do it. So I move to amend this motion except for two, you know, to not include two zero zero four six seven, the special order on the blight.
Madam President?
Ms. Galloway?
I support that motion.
Okay, normally, we- they really aren't formal motions on request for changes or additions to agenda, but I- I'm certainly willing to accommodate Mr. Mays' request to in- to separate his special order of two zero zero four six seven and moving its place on the agenda to have these, uh, after the resolution. So, the vote is going to be- the vote is going to be- Mr. Mays, can I finish my sentence?
Y- yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, you recognize me though.
Mr. Mays has requested to amend the change or addition to the agenda to exclude one special order, uh, and he wants that which- to have that after public speaking. That's why I was not separating the- or- or was doing it in the order I was doing it in. So, this vote on change to agenda is to have all special order with the exception of two zero zero four six seven after the resolution.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Galloway?
There's someone that's not, um, muted, and so it seems like there was some talking going on when you were talking.
Okay, Ms. Galloway, that actually, you don't need to do a point of order on that. Just ask for the floor for anyone in the future, because the sound quality does vary, and we do have interruptions. Please just ask for the floor, and I'm glad to accommodate any comment under, um, that consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there any more discussion on, uh, having all special orders with the exception of two zero zero four six seven come after the resolutions?
Madam President?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I would like for it to be that easy for me, not to be scared to ask for the floor call or point of order, because either way seem like I'm trying to be chastised, but I'm a big boy politician. I can deal with it. My point to you was this, when I was trying to get your attention, didn't want to abuse your point of information or point of orders, but I don't think it's factual for you to say normally, we don't vote on agenda changes. That's exactly what we doing. We always vote on agenda changes. So you're not doing me a favor. It's the motion to make an agenda change, and we vote on them, and I'm doing a legitimate amendment. Quit singling me out like you're doing me something different. Learn these rules. God bless you.
Mr. Mays, I didn't say we don't vote on it. What I said was, we don't make a motion, okay? We ask for a change or addition to agenda. We have discussion, and then we vote on that request for a change or addition.
Point of information.
Right, still speaking. What is your point of information, Mr. Mays?
Isn't that's what a motion is? You make it, and then you vote on it? What do you think it is? It's a motion.
Is there any further discussion on this change or addition to the agenda to have all special orders after resolutions with the exception of special order two zero zero four six seven? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, on the motion.
Okay, Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs? Yes, okay. Worthing?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Gara?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Vote is nine yes and zero no.
Vote is nine yes, zero no. We will have special orders after the resolutions with the exception of two zero zero four six seven.
Madam President?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, as through you to whoever's listening, Mr. Edwards, whoever is Mr. Duval Murdock presently waiting on the phone.
Madam- Madam President, um, may I respond?
Yes, Mr. Edwards?
Uh, Mr- Mr. Murdoch has been officially, uh, reassigned to a different task. However, we do have an appropriate individual, uh, Lindsey Crawford, who will be happy. She's to, uh, respond to any questions related to blight. She's been actively at the center of a lot of blight activity, so she is on the line and will be prepared to, uh, provide you with all necessary responses.
So, to make a long story short, Ms. Galloway asked for Mr. Murdock, and you telling her and us that he won't be here, or can he be here? We- that's what I'm asking, because I'm trying to line this up on where to put it based upon what's convenient for y'all. I don't want people to say they couldn't be at the eleven o'clock. Can you answer the question in that way as it relates to the councilwoman's request?
You- you- your request is about- your request is about blight, if I understand.
Oh, no, the request was deputy- it's in writing Deputy Chief of Staff Duval Murdock to discuss blight. He got some knowledge. Um, that transition might just be happening. I mean, you gotta grant our request. So you saying, can you grant it? Is it impossible? Do- should we reset it? We gotta make a s- serious decision where we put this in the agenda. What's your recommendation? Because the councilwoman can speak for herself. I'm just interested in it. I'm asking that, what you want to do, what you're gonna do. We want the Deputy Chief of Staff. I don't care if he might move one- one area to another any day of the week, but for months he been blight. Now, what's your answer? Can he show? Is he not gonna show? I will- we'll gra- I'll gladly talk to Lindsey.
Excuse me, Mr. Mays, I believe that Mr. Edwards answered your question, and we still have two other items on additions to agenda to vote on, so I'd like to move on.
Yes, ma'am. I- yes, ma'am. I would like to move on as well, but may I continue with getting the answer? Can I get the answer from Mr. Edwards rather than you as it relates to can Mr. Murdock be a favor?
Instead of ask, Mr. Mays, it's been asked and answered. The next proposed agenda change is-
Madam President, Madam President, Madam President, I had the floor. You can't interrupt and take the floor in the middle of my question, and you granted me the right to talk to somebody. Don't gag order me and penalize me and mess with me. I know the rules. Let me continue with the floor. A chairperson can't give it and take it. That's God. God give it and take-
You're out of order, Mr. Mays. We don't normally-
I appeal to the ruling of the chair.
There's an appeal to the ruling of the chair. Is there a second to that appeal? Is there a second to that appeal? Is there a second to have that appeal? Appeal failed.
No, Councilwoman President, I support that appeal. Councilwoman Fields?
I'm sorry, I can't tell if someone's trying to get my attention. Is that Ms. Galloway?
That is. That is.
Yes, Ms. Galloway?
I supported that appeal.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you support that.
I know. You were trying to speak up.
Yeah, you're- you're kind of garbled. I don't know the connection between my phone and yours. I'm getting a little garbling, but, uh, so there is a second to that appeal. All right, I said that the question to Mr. Edwards had been asked and answered. I ruled against Mr. Mays' point of order because it's not a breach of the rules. I don't believe there's any rule that speaks to allowing a councilperson to question staff during the middle of changes or additions to agenda. I was trying to accommodate Mr. Mays, so I allowed him to do so, but there is no rule that was breached because there is no rule that speaks to that. I simply wanted to move on with the next request for, uh, change in addition to the agenda. So, uh, is there any other discussion?
Madam President?
Ms. Galloway?
Ms. Galloway, yes, ma'am. I- I want to say thank you because, um, you are in fact correct. Um, the only reason why I supported that appeal is because you took the floor, and so just help me understand, it's actually giving him the floor, and then because, you know, Mr. Edwards responded, and I'll get into that because that special order was very clear, and Mr. Edwards was, um, aware of it earlier, and he never responded that Mr. Um, Murdock was not going to be here, but Ms. Fields, you gave him the floor. It's not that- that it wasn't okay to move on, but you- I just want to understand, how are we, um, going to proceed when someone has the floor? Do you have the right as the chair to take it away from them in that fashion? And if in fact you do, and that is going to be the way that you are going to be chaired, I just want to know so that I can understand. But in my opinion, the reason why I supported the appeal is because although you thought he should be done, he wasn't done, and you in fact gave him the floor, and at that moment you took it away. So that's the only reason why I did that.
Mad- Madam President?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Mays, and then Ms. Worthing?
Yeah, Madam President, not only did you give me the floor, but you gave me the opportunity when I said through you to Mr. Edwards or whoever else was in the hearing, and you allowed that, and our rules allow us to talk to people, and the purpose I was talking was to see where to put this, um, special order at since I had separated, might postpone it or whatever, but you can't be a chair that give people the flow and then just against all council rules, take it arbitrarily, and say, "I'll answer the question for Mr. Edwards. It's been asked and answered." No, it had not. This is recorded. Anybody would sense know that I'm trying to see, can they call, and he come on the line? Is it gonna be impossible? Is we limited to Lindsey? I know what's happening with blight. I know about these couches and stuff on Russell Street. I know how often it dumps. I know the six councilpeople that voted no on blight, and so this is agenda change. Let me decide how important blight is to my reelection, because I'm gonna tell them folks who, when I call them, ah, the residents know we calling. We want a clean neighborhood. It's a priority. So don't tell me I'm out of order. Don't give me the flow and juke me, and then don't let me go through you. I'm being polite. I'm calling you Madam President. I'm saying through you. I'm asking for the flow. You telling people points of orders ain't to be recognized. You saying, "But Ms. Galloway, if there's something you want to interrupt, just say my name. You don't have to say a point of order." You know, do you really think that you being fair? I know not, and it's the infant stages of your presidency. So I appeal you. I appreciate the second. I don't care if the six people violate Robert's rules, the charter, the law of voting and bending over backwards to make you think you right. You wrong. And if this how we gonna govern ourselves, we in a world of trouble.
Ms. Worthing?
Yeah, I don't understand the concept. Just because you let someone speak doesn't mean that, uh, you know, that they are able to just say and do whatever they want. We're still on agenda changes. If, you know, if we want to get to that special order and talk during the special order about this, great, but we're just voting on agenda changing, and I think that's why Ms. Fields, uh, ruled the way she did. The question was asked and answered. I heard the answer. We all did, um, and the answer was, he's not there. He's not even in that position anymore, and Ms. Garcia's gonna take his place, uh, to speak. So, uh, the question was asked and answered. We all have that information to vote now, and- and let's do that.
Is there any other discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, I- I also heard, uh, Mr. Edwards say that, uh, uh, there was a replacement on the line for Mr. Murdock, so, uh, right now I think we're just wasting city time.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Any other discussion? I would like to say on this appeal, yes, I do think I am fair. In fact, I really been over backwards trying to accommodate Mr. Mays, as Ms. Galloway had also agreed and pointed out. There is no, uh, accommodation to let a councilperson question staff members during request for changes and or additions to agenda, but I allowed Mr. Mays to do that. I gave him that courtesy. I don't think I'll be doing that in the future because it just leads to discussion that's better served after we vote on where the special order takes place and the answers to those questions or further inquiries. And the answers to those questions or further inquiries can be made when we can get to the special order. Which with all these unnecessary points of order when it really isn't, there's no breach of the rules that's been taken. Um, so, uh, I believe Mr. Mays, um, is out of order. And I believe if you vote yes, you agree with the chair. If you vote no, you agree with Mr. Mays. So, roll call.
Point of order, point of order, Madam President.
I've called for roll call.
Point of order, point, point of order.
There's no point of order during, after I've announced roll call.
Madam President, point of order is in order.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Griggs? Mr. Griggs? Hello?
No, no.
Ms. Worthing? Ms. Worthing?
Oh, sorry, I was muted, yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Did you hear me?
Hello? No, I didn't hear you.
I said yes.
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter? Mr. Winfrey? Ms. Galloway?
There's, uh, four, four yes and five no.
Four yes, five no, that means that the appeal wins. So, Mr. Mays-
Point of order, the, the appeal wins, so I get to proceed with talking to Mr. Edwards is what you're saying?
Mr. Mays, that's not a point of order. I was saying there was no breach of the rules at that point in time. Please don't use a point of order unless you're calling for a specific breach of the rules. And yes, I was saying that your appeal won. So, once again, I'm going to allow you to talk to Mr. Edwards for a brief amount, amount of time. And then we're going to move on again to the changes or additions to agenda so we can actually get to those special orders and other business. So, Mr. Mays, you have the word.
So, Mr. Edwards, even though y'all telling us that Mr. Murdoch been switched from Blight, is it your belief we know that, that I for one don't need to talk to him about that department he done had for months?
It, it, it's my belief and administration's belief that council has the right and ability to call or question who they feel are necessary. It is equally the administration's right to provide the people in the area with the correct hands.
Let me say where I respectfully disagree with you. When we go to bed and Murdoch is over Blight and we wake up the next morning and it's Lindsey, I disagree with you. You don't, uh, tell me or should tell this council who and what we ask about this city operations. So we just respectfully disagree. When a councilperson requests somebody, that would be like saying, don't talk to, um, Eric Scorsone about what's been happening in finance the last seven months. That's a ridiculous logic to me. So, in other words, I'll let the council and Ms. Galloway and them decide and I'm gonna request a special order for him to come up and I ain't gonna be bending on mine like Ms. Galloway and them might or might not do, I don't know yet. But that's a bad answer. Now that let me know I can put this with the rest of the special orders and when we get to it, we'll discuss some more whether y'all make a decision on who we request to come up in which area.
Mr. Mays, are you now requesting that we, you withdraw your request to have Special Order 200467 after public speaking? A withdrawal now?
I would just, I would just make the motion that it go in with the rest of them and I so moved.
Is, is there support for the motion?
But now keep in mind, if we, if we ain't, ain't no other motion on the floor, is it? Then ain't no appeals, ain't no nothing, so I would be free to make that.
Mr. Mays, you're out of order. You don't have the floor. I've asked, you've made a motion and I've asked if there's support for your motion.
Madam President, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
Ms. Galloway?
And I support that motion.
Motion has been made and supported, is there any discussion?
Madam President, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
Ms. Galloway?
This was my special order and it wasn't just about Blight. It included the fact that, um, Mr. Murdoch has not, has, for whatever reason, is not going, um, is not responding to the request of the Ethics and Accountability Board. Um, I respect Lindsey. Lindsey is not a department head. And so, although she has much expertise, and Lindsey, I appreciate you so much. You are always responsive. You do a, an amazing job. That was not what this special order was. And I don't know what the administration is doing, but as a council, I think that my colleagues should support any of us that makes a specific request for a person who up until we just found out now was in charge of the Blight Department. That is a concern. It may fall upon deaf ears with this council and that's fine. But I have a platform as well and it doesn't have to be just in this setting. And so I will get the answers that I need. I requested Mr. Murdoch. Mr. Edwards is aware of it. He responded to an email when Janelle sent it earlier today reminding him about this. And he didn't respond saying that Mr. Murdoch wouldn't be here, but Lindsey would. That would've been a common courtesy. We shouldn't be hearing about it in this open setting. And so I'm not satisfied and, uh, Madam President, you have all the authority, um, in the world, but I'm asking that my colleagues would respect the request that I made specifically with someone who was deemed to be the head of that department all of this time.
Ms. Galloway, the motion on the floor was simply to move this special order with the other special orders after the resolution. The, the time for all of those comments is when we actually get into the special order. So is there any other discussion on the actual motion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays, this is your second time.
No, this is the first time. She just seconded the motion, didn't she? And she went first, I don't know, I'm not gonna nitpick, but you gotta get sharper than what you are. And what I mean by that is this, not only is it my first or second time, get sharp on that. Don't always think it's my second. How many minutes did I use in the first?
You're out of order. You're out of order. You are making-
I asked how many minutes I had left?
You are out of order. You are making derogatory comments about the chair. Please confine your comments to be germane about the motion, which is simply to have that particular special order with the other special orders after the resolution. You may proceed.
Is the chair thinking it's not relevant for me to ask how many minutes I got left in my second round? If it is, derogatory things go both ways. I don't think I feel elated when you talk and refer to me. And so, you know, it's all perception. I got a right to ask how much time I got left if it is my second time. If I think the chair's wrong, if it's my first or second, derogatory or rerogatory. I'm gonna ask it and say it. Be cool. My point is this, if I can remember it with all these rudimentary eruptions when you give me the flow to try to chastise me, it ain't gonna work. Flint know me and Flint know you. My position is this, Ms. Galloway of me or anybody can make some relevant germane, kito, whatever, and we can discuss it whether we tell you we gonna vote yes or no on the motion. It's relevant if she said, I didn't just ask him about Blight, I asked him about the committee. I asked about department head versus appointee and trucks being driven by appointees versus department head. So, we know what this special order is, Ms. Fields. So be cool. And we gonna bring it up, we know when to bring it up.
Mr. Mays, you are out of order. The motion on the floor is the only thing that should be discussed. The motion is simply for a change or addition to the agenda, which is to have this special order heard during, after resolutions with the other special orders. That is the only topic you should be speaking to.
And so that's what I'm speaking to. And if you so dense you can't understand that, listen to this. So that mean I'm gonna vote to move it to wherever. So where, when it moved there, I can talk about it in these type of details so Mr. Edwards can prepare cause he said in this discussion when we were making the motion of a disbelief of what our reasons was. So please, Ms. Fields, I'm really entertaining you. And you entertaining the listeners, cause people are saying, I didn't know she was that dense.
Is there any other discussion on the actual motion? Hearing none, roll call. The, the motion on the floor is to include Special Order 200467 with the other special orders, which are to come after resolutions.
Okay. Ms. Worthing?
Eva Worthing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no.
The vote is nine yes, zero no. The motion carries, the Special Order 200467 will be with the other special orders in order after the resolutions. Uh, the, the last request for a change or addition to agenda is a bit tricky. It is by Mr. Griggs and he asked to keep public speaking where it is on the agenda. But we just previously had a vote, uh, which was approved to have public comment and council response, um, after, uh, where was it?
Point of information.
Uh, Ms. Galloway, what's your point of information?
We already voted on that, Madam President. Are you aware that we already voted on that? That was the first thing we voted on?
I am aware of that, but, Ms. Galloway, but I'm trying to be fair to Mr. Griggs. And right now I'm trying to, if I get an opportunity here, I just lost, uh, I'm trying to look at my agenda with all these notes, uh, where we put public speaking. Uh, Janelle, where did we put on the first vote? Where did we put public, uh, comment and council response? Prior to or after executive session? I think it was prior to executive session.
It was before executive session.
Okay, so I'm going to give Mr. Griggs the opportunity, since we've already voted on that, to withdraw his request for a change or addition to agenda because we already voted to have it just prior to executive session. Mr. Griggs?
If I understand, there is no other choice. Am I correct?
I believe so.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
What is your point of information, Mr. Mays?
If he wanted to get a reconsideration, six threshold vote, he could try it, but I don't think they there.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mays, that's not a valid, Mr. Mays, that's not a valid point of information. Mr. Griggs?
I took it as a motion and I so moved on it.
Okay, so Mr. Griggs? Even though we voted on this, Mr. Griggs still wants his right to request this change through the agenda. He wants to keep public speaking where it is on the agenda.
Oh, point of information. Point of information.
What is your point of information, Ms. Worthing?
Uh, through the chair to Mr. Griggs, I think he meant your motion to withdraw, not to keep his motion. Is that correct?
Oh. No, I did not wanna, I did not wanna withdraw. I just wanted to make the motion that we keep public speaking where it is on the agenda.
Mr. Griggs, you do under-
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
You should be asking is there a second for his motion?
Mr. Mays, I don't need your assistance at this point in time. I did not reach a rule. I was trying to clarify whether Mr. Griggs was indeed making a motion or if he understood what we had already voted on. So, thank you, but your assistance is not needed. Mr. Griggs, the first agenda change we voted on, which was approved-
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
I'm not giving you assistance, I'm calling points and texts on rules. You should be asking is there a second? Repeat the motion and ask is it a second? You don't make these rules and it ain't a privilege that I'm doing, it's right. I'm elected.
I deny your point of order and it's denied because I was simply trying to clarify whether Mr. Griggs indeed had made a motion or if he understood we had already voted on that. So your motion, your point of order is denied. Once again, Mr. Griggs, do you, are you trying to make a motion even though we already voted to have public comment and council response right before executive session? This would be, in essence, uh, a futile motion.
Well, I'm- Well, no, I-
It has already been voted on. I'm sorry, Mr. Griggs?
I make a motion that we reconsider the previous vote.
Mr. Mays, Mr. Griggs has made a motion for reconsideration on the wish to have public comment or council response prior to executive session. Is there a second? Is there a second to Mr. Griggs's motion? Is there support for Mr. Griggs's motion? Hearing none, the motion fails. So we're going to move on to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am, I believe Janelle has copies of everything. The first speaker has been unmuted if they'd like to speak. The first person has been unmuted. I don't know if you heard me, I don't know if he heard me, but the first person has been unmuted if they'd like to speak.
This is Reverend Thralkell. Hello? Do you hear me, Madam, Madam President? Reverend Thralkell, First Ward, 214 East Pulaski, are we being heard?
You are Reverend, please continue.
Bless y'all peepickin' hearts. I've been listening to you all- Bless y'all peepickin' hearts. I've been listening to you all since 5:15, and all I can come up with W, W, W. How dumb can we be? And I say we, and, but the only thing that I can do is to pray and cast my vote, exercise my vote, and these other wards, Fourth Ward, Ninth Ward, Eighth Ward, Third Ward, and you all are representing that ward. I admire Brother Mays, I stand behind him even though he's not right all the time, but he's the man for the job, and you all ought to show some courtesy. And Madam President, you brought back the Fabulous Five. Ah, Ray Charles could see this, but I'm just gonna pray for us. You all are making the mayor look good. The city of Flint is where it is because of his leadership, and in that council, I tell you, the spirit of the Fabulous Five have returned. When you cough, Madam President, four other people cough at the same time. God bless y'all. Good night. Bye-bye.
Next speaker?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, yeah.
Okay, my name is Barbara Moore, and, you know, again, I am really appalled at this, this is just a mockery. Uh, Mr. Maurice Davis, Councilman Maurice Davis, I had high respect for you, but no more. You say that he's not a bootlicker and all this, and you going around saying black people never done anything for you. How do you think you made, made it through with your, uh, music career? How do you think he made it with your, uh, beauty salon? And for you to go on your podcast with all your vulgar and sexually explicit language, sitting at a council seat, that's a total disgrace and embarrassment, total disrespect for the office. And then, you even had the audacity to say that you was gonna nominate Kate Fields as the, uh, president. Then you went on to say that you were gonna make her the president, and the only reason you could say that was because of what Pastor Thrillkill just said. You got the five votes. But you know what? It's not gonna go according to your plan. I'm looking at it tonight, and I pay close attention to detail, your votes was messed up a couple of different times. Maurice Davis voted yes on one thing, and when he saw that he had voted the wrong way, and that Janelle didn't hear him, he changed the vote from yes to no. Didn't nobody detect that. If, I mean, somebody probably detected, but they didn't speak on it, because they were part of the group. And then, uh, Councilman Griggs, he messed up the vote. See, you all, uh, think you being smart, but it's obvious that Kate Fields don't know what she doing, she's not the right person for the position. Whenever you can sit up there and tell your colleague, "F you," what do they say about you? And then, you gotta have Janelle to keep telling you, uh, to read something, to reread it, when you should be abreast of what's going on yourself. And like I said, you, you realize, same thing happened with Trump. It's a guy. You got another Trump in office amongst the city council. Thank you.
The next person has been unmuted?
Yes, my name is A.C. Gilchrist. Excuse me, and I reside in the, uh, Third Ward, City of Flint. I just wanna say that I'm just appalled to this council meeting. Uh, you know, what, what else can I say? Uh, you know, it sounds like a dictatorship, Mrs., uh, Ms. Fields. You don't like it, then you rule against it. And I'm just gonna caution Brother Mays to be careful, because you're just waiting to throw him out of a meeting. And Eva Worthing is your cheerleader. She's a cheerleader. And so, I'm like the previous speaker, you know, we understand what's happening, we understand corruption, and we do understand that, you know, uh, there is a God that rules both earth and heaven. Now, saying that, I would ask that this Flint City Council vote no to go into executive session for the water settlement. And reason I say that is because I think the people ought to have a voice about the settlement. And also, I've learned from my attorney that this settlement would exclude adults. It will exclude adults, and very few children would be, uh, in this settlement, very few, from this company, this lawyer, uh, from New York. And if it's brought up on the floor, I would hope that you all would vote no on the floor. You know, this is a bad time we're living in, uh, and I just think this water settlement, it's ludicrous. Don't nobody understand it, going to executive session and signing a non-closure, uh, agreement? That's a lawyer's term, meaning you can't say nothing. Well, you know, you couldn't say anything in executive session, but I certainly wouldn't let them tie my hands. So, again, the council election is next year. Uh, Mr. Mays, and, and those righteous people on the council, uh, when I say righteous, those who, who want to do right, just hold on till next year, because a change is gonna come. Thank you.
Next speaker?
The next person has been unmuted? If they'd like to speak?
Hello?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Speaker, can you hear us? You've been unmuted.
Um, yes, I can. I think you're speaking to me.
I am.
Um-
It's your turn to speak.
Okay, um, whew, uh, the only thing, one of the things I wanna say is, I just encourage-
Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, my name is Sharon. And, um, I've been involved in trying to be a part of this neighborhood I grew up in, Civic Park, um, for the last couple of years, just kinda been watching things go on. Um, I was born and raised in Flint, my grandfather was a UAW sit-down striker. And what I've seen, and what I've come to learn about what's happening in certain parts of the city, particularly in the area I grew up, where there's two hundred plus children, that not one person in the city of Flint has done anything for that I can see of, as far as schooling, providing, um, a safe haven for them, AKA Haskell Park, where I learned to swim at. Um, I am just employing, uh, and asking and pleading with this council to unify together, put aside your differences, your political beliefs and, and whatnot, and come together as a city, and bring the city back together like it used to be, in the capacity that it used to be safe. Um, Civic Park was an area where, um, I felt safe at. I still feel at home there. I don't feel unsafe there. I know it's a dangerous area, at least a lot of people think it is, but I still feel like it's home to me. And I wanna see, and I wanna be a part of the solution. So, whatever I can do to assist in that capacity, I'm, I'm all about it. I'm all about fighting for what's right. And, um, I just hope and encourage, again, this, this body of council members that have the ability and capacity to move Flint in a wholesome, honest direction. I just encourage you all to do that and unify, and come together for the residents, the seniors, the elderly, and the children in the community that don't have the voices. And, um, a shout out to all the activists and all the people out there on the front lines every day, trying to do their best. And thank you for your service and your work, and I hope you continue to work hard to try to bring the city together and come together as a body, instead of tearing each other down.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next person has been unmuted if they'd like to speak? The next person has been unmuted?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, we can hear you.
All right, before my time start, uh, can I ask if were there any add-ons, and then, on the water litigation? Is this the water litigation for Scott Kincaid, or for the, uh, state settlement?
There are no add-on resolutions.
Excuse me, Janelle? Janelle?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. There, there is no dialogue during public speaking.
I'm sorry.
And I'm getting an echo.
All right, so I just don't start.
Say your name, and you can start, if you're in for the speaker.
My name is Arthur Woodson, all right? And, uh, I'm getting tired of everybody talking about unity and coming together, and holding hands and singing songs. Ms. Fields, you don't need to be the president. You are an awful person. I, I mean, seriously, we got rid of, we just voted out President Trump, now we got a missed president.
Point of order.
Listen, Mr. Fields, you are out of order. He's talking, he's talking.
I'm not out of order. I didn't say anything-
He's talking. Ms. Sarah Woodson, please read your paper, Mr. Woodson. I'm going to read Council Rule 29.6. Any person while being heard at a council meeting may be called to order by the president or any other council person for failing to be germane, for vulgarity, for personal attack of persons or institutions, or for speaking in excess of the allotted time. I will give the floor back to Mr. Woodson, but he must follow this rule, or he will be declared out of order and muted. Proceed, Mr. Woodson.
Point of order, point of order.
Again.
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
Have you ruled that he was then for, have you ruled that he was then for getting out of order, 'cause he was criticizing you? And if so, I wanna appeal that.
Mr. Mays, can you hold a moment? I'm getting a terrible echo and it's back. Janelle Zedina, can we fix that?
I'm sorry.
I can't fly that he's speaking.
We're getting echoes back from everybody. We'll wait until you fix it.
How about that?
Yeah, that's better.
Very good. Mr. Woodson, you have the floor.
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
I'm asking, did you rule that he was attacking your presidency, or you personally, or have you ruled him out of order? I wanna know how I need to proceed.
Yes, Mr. Mays. Mr. Woodson said that I was an awful person, which is a personal attack.
I'll be watching this close.
Mr. Woodson, would you like to proceed?
I said you was a awful president already, not a awful person. As much as Councilwoman, uh, Eva Worthing attacked Ms., 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 uh, uh, Galloway, and you denied her appeal, then you wanna sit up here, and then, uh, Councilman Davis wanted to hurry up and jump in, because he knew he was next. Councilman Davis, I will be coming for your seat. Councilman Griggs, you will be coming out in May, because I will be going out there getting those signatures myself. I don't care if it's raining, sleet, snow, I don't care, I will put on snowshoes and drive a snowmobile to get those signatures, so that I can remove that fifth vote. Now, since everybody wanna talk, why don't you ask the city if they got that plan sent in to Judge Lawson, because our water has not been safe for the past two, uh, uh, lead copper rule sampling? Now, ask that question. Ms. Worth, I mean, Ms., Ms. Willard, I need to know, y'all getting ready to give Goyette that 1.1 million dollars that they had sued the city for, if I'm not mistaken. What, what documents do you have that changed your position that you had under Mayor Weaver, where you fought tooth and nail, and said that they didn't go through arbitrary, so they wouldn't go to court? So, why you giving them 1.1 million? Is it because they contributed to, uh, Mayor Neely's campaign? Is that the reason why? To where it paid him back his 13,000 that he loaned to himself? What is really going on here? And everybody's following the leader. Councilman Davis, you can say that you don't follow the lead, but understand one thing. I was the person that went to Sheldon Neely and told him, "All you have to do is get Councilman Davis to the table and make him feel like he's somebody, and he will lick your boot." That's what I actually told him, "And I'd be doggone if you didn't do it." That's what's going on here. And no, I'm not mad at you because you voted for Trump. I'm mad at you because of the simple fact you said only white people have done something for you, and white peo, and black people are jealous. That's what I'm mad about. You put the black people down to make yourself look good, and then for it to be six, what, uh, six minorities, y'all gotta oversee it. You didn't even feel that you were, uh, uh, smart enough to be president? You let them talk you out of being president, and you voted for somebody else while you been vice president? What is really wrong with you? And then y'all wanna sit up here and tell somebody they out of order. No, you all are out of order. A stuff for the four. Monica, you, uh, 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 Winfrey, Winfrey Carter, and Mays are the only four that's in order. And do not go in executive session, because of the simple fact, we all wanna know what's going on. If the state can tell us how much money they're gonna go settling with, you can too.
Your time is up, Mr. Woodson. Next speaker, please.
The next person has been unmuted?
Yes, thank you. My name is Chris Delmaroni, and I live in Flint, Michigan. This is becoming quite a council meeting. Uh, I wanna bring up the issues of blight, which I consider blight, so they'd be the basketball hoops out in the street. Now, you know, ironically, you cannot park your car within, uh, thirty-five feet of a curb, more than eight inches from the curb. Uh, you cannot, uh, park it on the no parking side of the street, but yet, the basketball hoops are allowed. You call the blight department, nothing happens. I'll say it again, in order to get rid of blight in Flint, you need to get rid of the blight department. At least now we found out, we have a different person in charge, so I'm hoping we'll see things get done. But when I call in a dead tree between the curb and the sidewalk, and I've called in many of them, a half a dozen here in the last couple of months, nothing happens. Blight says, "We don't do it, we, we hire it out." Well, when it doesn't get done, it's telling me the contractor's looking off the city and maybe saying it's been done, or the blight department needs to follow up and say, "Hey, did you get it done in thirty days?" Or whatever the requirement is. I'm not gonna drive around the city again and call in dead trees to a dead department. It's ridiculous. Again, you know, speeding in the city of Flint, University and Nolan, there's another accident there the other day, the people ran away from the car, they alleged that it was stolen, I think it wasn't, but that's my opinion. How do we allow cars in Flint to be driven on our streets with no license plate? Now, I'm not talking about not a current license plate, I'm just talking about no plate at all. I mean, when does this stuff stop? I call 911 about a car, no plate, and they say, "Well, that's the blight department." Well, you know, if I leave a car in Downer Highway, Chevrolet Avenue, Ford Highway, just park it and leave it without a plate, they're not gonna stick there and give me two weeks to move it, they're gonna tow it. And that's what we should be going, happening in our neighborhood. It's called a little tough love, you know? It's a lack of leadership. The I-475 project, that's a bad idea without a plan. Now, the mayor's saying, "Hey, we want the community input." Well, if you want the community input, how do you already have drawings for it? How do you already have it sent- How do you already have it sent off for engineering studies? They're gonna try and make this a done deal. What'll happen, you of them will try to expand their campus. Uh, you know, the people with the deep pockets, they'll be in there buying the land up or whatever they wanna do. In regards to the water settlement, I'm trying to find out who's entitled to the water settlement for damage to the, 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 the pipes and the washing machines and things like that. The current owner of the property, the owner who was living there before, the owner who was living there before that's now deceased? Who's entitled to that money? The money should be going to the property and not to whoever is, was, will be in the property. But, uh, you know, if you go to exec- now you're breaking all up again. So, if you go into executive session, ask some of them questions, who's entitled to the water money for the damage? If you do the-
Mr. Delmaroni, I believe your time is up. Is that the bell now? Thank you. Next speaker?
The next person has been unmuted? 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 The next person has been unmuted?
Hello? Nothing.
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Your name, your name, please?
My name, my name is Charles. Um, I've been following, uh, City Council since 2015. And it's amazing to me to see what's going on tonight. Um, everyone has the right to do and choose what they wanna choose. But, real quick, to Ms. Worthing, it's interesting that Ms. Worthing says sometimes she goes after people real sarcastically. But yet and still, this time last year, when you guys were voting for position, on that hot mic, Ms. Worthing sat right there and said to all of her colleagues that I worked with a bunch of idiots. Those were her words. That's what only you guys is recording. Now, to Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, I had a lot of respect for you, sir, until I saw your politics. I don't care about the politics, but for you to sit there and put-
Now, we can't hear the speaker, is that a technical problem?
I'm checking. You shouldn't do it.
Well, we can no longer hear the speaker.
That's okay, go to the next one, I didn't come back.
Next public speaker, please.
The next person has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted?
Hello?
Hello?
Am I the next person?
Yes.
You're up.
Hey, thank you. Members of City Council, my name is Greg Fiedler. And I'm homeowner at 1802 Ramsey Boulevard in Woodcroft Estates. I wanna request that there not be a variance to our A1 single-family residence zoning at Woodcroft Estates.
There is no variance. Law allows it.
Point of order. Excuse, excuse me.
Not Mr. Delmaroni?
There's one speaker. There's one speaker. Everyone else, please be muted.
Hello?
Proceed. Mr. Fiedler, proceed.
The owners of 1702 Kenwood are seeking a variation in the zoning code with the purpose of opening a commercial group home. Modifications have already been made to the structure gaining building code variations obtained illegally. It is difficult to maintain integrity in a neighborhood in Flint, Michigan. It was difficult before 2008 and it's become even more difficult since. I was forced from my home of twenty-eight years at 505 West Patterson Street in 2008, mostly due to the city of Flint's inability to close an illegal drug operation across the street from me. After moving, I rented the home for two years, but the mass exodus of homeowners and the number of homes boarded, burned, and demolished was so high I could no longer rent the home or sell it. There, there were literally no takers. Cities began breaking in and stealing HVAC and pipes, and my insurance was canceled due to the property not being inhabited. Eventually, I had to make the devastating decision to let my beautiful tutor that I had invested my time and money in for thirty years go to the land bank. However, loyal Flint man, I chose to stay in the city of Flint even though I was advised to get out while I could. I couldn't have moved anywhere in the county at the time, but I had faith that the Woodcroft neighborhood would survive, so I purchased a home there. I was surprised upon moving into the neighborhood that we were under a constant onslaught of home invasion. My home was broken into twice within the first two years. We reached out to City of Flint staff for help, but they refused to try any of our suggestions. Some of our suggestions had been approved in other neighborhoods and had great success, but we, but they were denied to us. We had to band together and form a bond through our neighborhood association to protect ourselves and keep our neighborhood safe, even though we pay some of the highest taxes in the city of Flint. At one point, a drug dealer actually did move into a home previously owned by former Mayor of Flint, James Rutherford, just a block away from me. Fortunately, after a couple of years, they decided to sell and move. Our association finally got together and hired a private security company, charging each of us five hundred dollars a year to each homeowner. We also formed a phone bank called Code Red so we could inform everyone within minutes of any suspicious activity.
Mr. Fiedler, your time is up. Your time is up, sir. Next speaker.
The next person has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted?
Hello? Hello?
Hello. Hello.
Hello, please state your name and then you have the floor.
Margaret Beth, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
So, I'm calling because of the tone of the chair this evening. We are all watching new officers. Sorry?
Could you state your name for the record?
Margaret Beth.
Thank you.
So, reclaiming my time, calling about the tone of the new administration for the meeting tonight, watching what's going on is appalling. It seems as though certain people are being singled out and harassed and bullied. Sometimes we call those people Nancy. And sometimes we want that to end. And tonight is a good night to end all of that. And I would like to have council to make note, keep a track of how many times you are harassed by council members and not defended, or protected, or honored, or respected. It's appalling. It is absolutely appalling. And the world is watching Flint. We've already been identified as a, a, a community that's in poverty, in a water crisis, and a pandemic, and voting for a man who will not even walk out of the White House. And we have to contend with this tone? I think the chair should take some training on management, um, elocution, uh, how to talk to people, how to get respect, how to be a leader. Not a follower, not an insulter, not a hater, and not perpetuating those negative, those negative acts. I give my time back to Mr. Mays or Ms. Galloway. I appreciate both of you fighting for the city this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next person has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted?
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I'm only calling about one subject because I'm involved. My name is Andrea Watson. I, I used to live in Flint. I am now residing in Massachusetts. And I have to say this, I am walking and a little dancing. At any rate, um, I'm calling about the lawsuits, and I first wanna commend, um, Councilman, oh my gosh. Councilman Winfrey, um, Galloway, and Councilman Eric Mays. And I would like to also add to Eric, thank you for not only calling me, but people across the country just to see how we're doing. That means a lot because kinda you feel like, well, they're out, we don't have to care. At any rate, with these lawsuits, I want you to really, really, really consider something that is so important. The adults, yes, I've been speaking about that a lot. There's so much more than lead. You can always just say part of the story, and no, it's not a lie, it's selective. And what I do see happening, and I do have a lot of background in education, child welfare, and the juvenile justice system, what I see is a psychiatric ward being built for pediatric, pediatric psychiatric ward at Hurley Hospital. A thirty million dollar juvenile, the juvenile detention center being enlarged and redone. Kids being put on medication all over the place. People on the ground, on the ground, having to fight for money for the schools, for these kids. It, it's absolutely absurd. Six hundred thousand dollars is like spitting in these kids' face and their future. If for anything at all, anything, please, think about those kids. This, it's not, and by the way, it's not a po- it's not a crisis. It's a public health disaster. That's what it is, on top of disaster, on top of disaster. If you wanna build that city back up, think about those youth. They're your future. All you're doing by voting yes on, on your, on the lawsuit and, and, and the other things is sending them into a pipeline into the prison for more private entity to make money. And that's not what any community is about. When I was in Flint before, it was booming. Education was so important. People were working. They were getting along. So before you go in there, please, whether you have children or not, think about those kids. Could you do that, please? Hello? Hello?
There's no dialogue, madam.
Oh, no, I was ju- okay, I, madam? Madam?
Are, are you still talking?
If you want respect, no, I, I have one more point after I say this. If you'd like respect, please give it to others. I am not a madam. I'm a lady. An educated woman, a mother, a grandmother, and a professional. Now, as I, let me finish my point, please. I'm sorry.
Your time, your time is up. Your time is up.
Took my time.
Mr. Speaker?
Took my time.
Your time is up. Then the board will-
Please think about the children.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, Madam Chair.
Now I can hear you. What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Madam Chair, normally, you did take a little bit of her time, but normally there is a courtesy to allow them to wrap up. I'm just asking that you would just, just treat them, her time was taken. It was interrupted a little bit, and so, that's my point of order.
Your, your point of order is well taken, Ms. Galloway. I will give the speaker another minute. Janelle, please time the minute. Speaker, please proceed.
This is, um, what's his name, uh, I mean, Dad. Hey. Time of the love and the daddy to die.
Janelle, someone needs to be muted. Other than the speaker. Is the speaker still on the line?
No.
Alright, next speaker then.
Uh, the next person has been unmuted? The next speaker has been unmuted? The next speaker has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, please state your name and then you have the floor.
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and then you have the floor.
Okay, my name is Joe Williams. Um, I need y'all to remember this name, not in a disrespectful way, but we need to work on the foundation of our city. With our kids, we need more, we need more fundraisers, we need more, more, more kid activities. We need rehab centers for our people who done did time and they out and they ready to enjoy life and get their life to moving. We ain't gonna be able to fix nothing until we start with the foundation. I hear a lot of arguing, I hear a lot of arguing that don't really make sense to me, honestly. Because if we work together, we'll get more done. I'm a businessman. I grew up here in Flint. I done did everything from promoting parties to owning my whole business to working. And I watched the city go down, and it ain't just about no water. Cause, cause we could, we could, we could do good without the water, honestly. We just need to stick together. We stick together and build it from the ground up, meaning that we need, we need, we need, uh, we need transportation programs for single mothers to get back and forth to work. We need, uh, talent shows. We need, I just heard somebody talking about a basketball room in the streets. Okay, if we had more places for the kids to go, they wouldn't be in the streets. When I was growing up, we had a lot of things to do, a lot. Right now, there's nothing to do, and everybody's just bickering back and forth with each other instead of getting it done. Now, if we gotta take it into our own hands and start building ourselves, we could do that. Do we need to do that? Or should we depend on our government to do it? Because either way, we will get it done. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next speaker?
The next person has been unmuted? The next person has been unmuted?
Nothing.
The next person has been unmuted?
Does that be me?
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Beth Stevens, uh, for the Park Neighborhood. I was just wondering, I listened to a meeting- I was just wondering, I listened to a meeting. I graduated with my DBA in business and
I love.
I'm really, really familiar with Robert's rules. And I was just wondering if maybe there's a class at Mott's where somebody could come give some instruction for Robert's.
Ma'am, could you hold just a moment? We have, uh, someone on the line that's not muted and, uh, interrupting you. Janelle, can you read that person?
I believe I got it.
Thank you. In a just a time a tad. Please proceed.
I just feel like everyone's not really familiar with Robert's rules and kinda guessing around at them. And maybe there's a class at Mott's Flint School or you could get some instruction at your meetings on how Robert's rules actually go and there will be a lot less confusion. Thank you.
The next person has been unmuted.
Yes, good evening. Yes, good evening.
Hi.
Hello?
Please state your name and then you have the floor.
Yes, good evening. Uh, Mr. Martin, I'm calling. This is a total disaster and disgrace. Mr. Davis, you first, sir. You fell into the biggest trap of the conquer and divide. For you to allow Kate Fields to separate this in that, in that manner, man. I, I saw so much more in you. This is a total disgrace for the City of Flint. She wants to be the Chair that bad and for you to come in and allow this to happen like this, that's terrible, brother. Total, total terrible. Ms. Galloway, you tried to stay strong tonight. You almost got weak. Don't let them push you around that way. You are an awesome Chair. I applaud everything that you did in your time. But this right here, what's going on right now, it's no way the City of Flint will ever move forward with Kate Fields at the Chair. I wish I could say more, but her tone alone tonight shows her true character and her puppet that follows her and seconds everything that she says. How can the city move forward with leadership like that? So let her continue to talk and show her true character tonight and everything will come to the light. Cause there's no way that this is gonna go on and no better can come from this. Especially with backdoor meetings with her and that crooked mayor that you guys have running the city. So I pray, I pray for the citizens of Flint because we're in bad shape. Brother Mays, I wish you had more power, brother, because truth be told, you're the smartest one up there. You might have a little attitude, but as far as politics, you know it. Hey, anybody with a brain on that council, Kate Fields not the way. Have a good night.
The next person has been unmuted.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, yes, I was on early. My name is Charles. Um, what I was saying, I'm not, I'm not gonna get on here and bash anybody, but it's gonna be facts. I've been following you guys since twenty fifteen.
Can you speak to me?
My name, Charles, Charles. And it's, it's, it's interesting with this, yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, excuse me. Janelle, we need to always ask for our first and last name because this is the second time we've had a speaker that just identified themselves as Charles. And speakers cannot repeat one time.
Point of order, point of order.
Right.
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
When you really research these rules, you might find out they don't even have to say what you asked them to say. So just, I'm gonna say carry on, but when you check it out, it's gonna surprise the heck out of you about what they have to tell you about they, who they is.
That's a valid point. Miss Galloway.
May I do something?
Yes.
Mrs. Janelle, it's very difficult when people call back in to know what they've spoken already. So I apologize for that if he's already spoken.
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
No, he got cut off. He got cut off.
Mr. Mays, you don't have the floor. It's very difficult, Janelle, to know that unless you ask them to say their first and last name. And the reason we're asking for that is because this is an electronic meeting and, um, by our rules, speakers are only allowed to speak one time. So now I'm going to rule on Mr. Mays' point of order. I deny his point of order because the rules require that speakers only speak one time. And that's why I made the point of, uh, asking for a first and last name to ensure that no one is given, uh, an unfair advantage of being able to speak more than once. Okay, so Charles, have you spoken before?
Madam President, Madam President, I'm just asking, do you know, Madam President, ma'am?
Charles, you don't have the floor.
Point of information.
Your point of information, Mr. Mays.
Would it surprise you if the state law in these rules say you can't ask them certain things? I'm just cautioning you. Angela, can you check that out while she continue to try to not hear what I'm saying? Thank you, Madam Charles. I'm out of the way.
This is Angela. You can comment when you want.
Angela? Yes?
Yeah, there's nothing in the rules that prevents the governing body from, um, making counsel rules to ask a person to state their first and last name.
Thank you. Now I'm going to, I'm addressing the speaker. Charles, have you called in and spoken once before?
Yes, ma'am. I was Charles. That was on, that was muted and you couldn't hear me anymore.
Well, I don't think we keep track of how many minutes you have left, but I will give you one minute to conclude.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Madam President. What I said earlier was that Eva was, this time last year with Eva Worthing. She sat right down at hot mic in y'all city council and called all of you guys, except for you, Madam Chair and Mr. Griggs, idiots. Um, Mrs. Davis, same thing for you. Do you remember that in May two thousand eighteen, when, when, when you were reading the charter and Ms. Fields said that you had a lack of understanding when it came to that charter and you took that offense to it? But it's not about the politics for me with you, Mr. Davis. Hell, I respect you and to your podcast. How dare you pick up a Bible and you read Romans one twenty-one, but you have a shirt on saying fix this, you know what? That right there is blasphemy. You need something one answer and exaltation and internal.
Charles, Charles, can you wrap up? You've had one minute extra.
Yes, ma'am. I'll wrap up. But, Mr. Davis, it, it, it's not about your politics. It's about the fact that if you're gonna hold up God, you can't cuss in the same sentence. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Next speaker, please. And Janelle, please ask for the first and last name. Janelle?
Yes, ma'am. Give me a sec.
Okay.
That's the last of the speakers, actually.
Okay, do we have any written comments?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
When you're reading them, please do not read what constitutes any personal attack of a person or institution.
Yes, ma'am.
Or wrong authority.
The first one says, council members, Mr. Mays, Mr. Davis, Mr. Garrett, Ms. Fields, Ms. Winfrey Carter, Mr. Winfrey, Ms. Galloway, Mr. Griggs and Ms. Worthing. My name is Keith Scunda. We have owned our home since August two thousand and are proud citizens of the City of Flint and Woodcroft One Neighborhood. I am writing about the situation at seventeen oh two Kenwood Avenue. The homeowners there have been cited for making improvements on the property without permits. This was done based on a large amount of evidence showing changes to the house. No permits have been pulled for anything other than the porch that is currently being worked on. I understand that to date, city inspectors have not been permitted into the residence. I am under the impression that the court date was pushed back because of this. How is it that the own homeowners can refuse entry into the home to inspectors and continue to have contractors working on the house? At the last city council meeting, the inspector stated that the only, the, the only issue stop work orders when safety is an issue. Creation of a second story without a structural inspection could lead to failure of the home causing injury. The redesign of the interior, complete with removing and adding walls, would require an electrical inspection to all the wiring in the walls. Without this inspection, no one knows if the work was done to code. Were fire stops installed? Without knowing, there is possible fire danger as flames can spread rapidly without the required fire stops. A backup generator has also been installed. If no inspection was done on the work, how does anyone know if this could be a potential fire hazard? Another safety concern could be the backfeeding of electric current into the power lines that could endanger utility workers attempting to restore power. The line card from the assessor's office showed that prior to the purchase of the house by the current owners, the house had no furnace or water heater. If no permit was issued and inspection done on both, how is it that they can even have been granted occupancy for the house that they claim to live in? This, this claim is important due to one of the owners being the eighth ward member of the city planning commission. The Department of Planning and Development is, is led by Director Suzanne Wilcox. Ms. Wilcox is called upon to report on this issue at council meetings. How is it that an eighth ward representative that has an outstanding citation for breaking the law can remain in that position? Is it not some sort of conflict of interest for Ms. Wilcox because of this? I request that a stop work order be placed on the property immediately and that it remains enforced until the needed inspection, inspections are completed. These inspections should be done as normal and no consideration given to avoid any removal of work to allow critical view of internal work. The owners plan to make this a group home. This should demand that they do everything by code and by the law to make a safe environment. No board position or affiliation with council members should overrule code and laws. And that is where the three minutes end. The next one is a group home in Woodcroft Neighborhood. Um, I believe this person already spoke. Yes, so I will go to the next one. House on Kenwood, Andrew Armstrong. How will this affect our home value? And he's talking, yeah, about the house on Kenwood. We live at twenty-three oh seven Radcliffe Avenue. How will this affect our own home value, Andrew? The next one is Dear City of Flint. On Tuesday morning and again on Saturday, city council vice president Maurice Davis and his wife Beverly said paid election workers at the Haskell Center ordered everyone there that they had to vote. Straight ticket or their ballot would be voided. That's a very serious allegation, which netted election fraud warnings in the Detroit Free Press as well as national outlets, but there was, but was for some reason ignored by MLive, ABC twelve, NBC twenty-five and W N E M five. Excuse me. I ask that Vice President Davis be given additional time tonight to detail on the record what exactly transpired at Haskell. What he and his wife shared was very problematic and should not be taken lightly. We must have total integrity in our local elections. I'd also encourage everyone to tune into Maurice and Beverly's Blues and News Saturday morning Facebook live show. And I'd like to close by thanking Maurice Allen Sheldon and the city attorney's office pursuing, for pursuing closure of liquor stores and gas stations at nine P M. I hope that comes to fruition very soon. Peace and quiet for once in our neighborhoods would be nice. Warm regards and thanks for serving. Chloe, heesh. I'm gonna have to ask Sabina to take over. My voice isn't sounding good. Hold on. Okay, this, this, uh, message is from Kelly Farthing. Kelly in the six wards. Can someone ask the police chief why is speeding unenforced twenty miles an hour on Sunset University and Chevrolet and cars are doing one hundred? An innocent elderly man was killed on Dupont on Saturday. Are we waiting until a Kettering or elementary school student is killed to write recusative tickets and impound cars? Then you have these store owners fueling violence, crime, addiction and decay all night. Their hours still have not been limited as was claimed on the news. Nobody wants to live here because every neighborhood has been ruined by these predatory stores. Our family won't even visit us because of the drama at Cheers, Marathon Gas, at Beechran Court. All the slumlord dope houses in Glendale Hills and crazy drivers. Nobody ever answers phones downtown. If someone responds to an email or actually calls back, their tone is very nasty. Then you look up their home address and put the voter rolls and you see they live in a suburb. I'm really disappointed in Herb, who hasn't seen a tax giveaway to millionaires he doesn't like. Our taxes and bills to live here go up while most of our millionaires get richer. I think I speak for everyone in Flint. We're all tired and wondering what is the point of residing here anymore? I heard you're voting for leadership tonight. Here's a question for you all and I bet none of you will answer. What precisely have you accomplished in the last twelve months? What have you accomplished since you were elected in twenty seventeen? How have you improved Flint? All of us residents live with the truth. You're getting money for nothing, hot air and buffoonery. Jerry Winfrey Carter is, it is really problematic that you're lobbying for money for your dad, Charles Winfrey. You owe him over four million dollars from county taxpayers from the, uh, Mellett. You need to refuse yourself from all votes and comments pertaining to grant dollars going to your dad's theater. Best of my knowledge, he hasn't had a production all year. Does that mean county taxpayers are getting a refund on the public dollars he received this year? Lastly, I want to thank Sheldon and Clyde for standing firm and not paying those illegal. Paying Deputy Stevens. They made over thirty million dollars in contracts, messed up along the way and then illegally dumped dirt in a residential neighborhood. That is disgraceful. As far as I'm concerned, they should be permanently blacklisted from all city bidding. And any deacon or wannabe activist supporting them needs to do some real soul searching. Kelly, six ward. Next message is from Tamara Harris. Good evening, city council and city administration. I'm writing tonight to congratulate Sheldon Neely for his first year in the mayor's office in fifteen years in Flint politics. Sheldon and his wife Cynthia have accomplished absolutely nothing this year except collect a quarter of a million dollars in salaries, benefits and public pensions. While Flint's condition and quality of life is like a third world country. Number one in poverty, number one in crime, number one in illiteracy, number one in blight, number one in illegal dumping, bad water and crumbling schools. Y G I S D's, Linda Hagel laugh to the three thousand dollar year, Marjorie Raymer laughing to the bank and one hundred thousand dollar year, Derrol Murdoch, master of the bank. Right job. He admitted to Arthur Woodson he does not actually do. Flint has never been more depressing, never been so filthy, never been so embarrassing. Flint has done nothing but decline each and every year of the fifteen years Sheldon Neely has been in politics. Time sure does fly. It seems just like yesterday Sheldon was at the Flint Water Plant bragging about how delicious and fresh the poisonous Flint water tasted. Then Sheldon, Cynthia and all the other local politicians and so-called activists and radio hosts took street money crumbs from the Biden campaign and local unions to sell the people of Flint out for Biden Harris killing. Corporate, coastal Democrats in the pocket of Wall Street and big tech would never have and never will do a thing for this hopeless town. Eric, I hope you win your lawsuit and I hope Derrol Murdoch is thrown in prison for violently assaulting you at roos. Remember when Sheldon said he'd get in helicopter to stop crime? And he got in office and immediately sicked his brother-in-law, Derrol, to put an elderly elected official in the hospital. Sheldon set the tone and now we have over forty homicides each year. Endless overdoses, gunshots all night and open air narcotic, narcotic trafficking on every street and store lot. I encourage everyone who can hear. I encourage everyone who can hear me to walk away from their Flint house and get out of here. There is no gentrification. This is a toxic miserable ghost town full of criminals in and outside of City Hall. Life is too short. City Hall will remain corrupt, lazy, and incompetent. Flint will never get better. The twenty twenty cents must count estimates that is we're down to eighty thousand. This week, I'm moving my family to Texas. Goodbye first, goodbye Flint. Next, um, comment is from Allison Mayer. Dear City Council, wondering if there's any update to limited hours ordinance for gas stations and liquor stores? I don't think anything could lower the city's temperature and raise our perception more than closing stores at a reasonable time. I wanted to push back on one of the talking points that Flint merchants would bankrupt if they had to close at a reasonable hour. State records say the highest grossing liquor store in Genesee County is on Old Road in Fenton. They close at ten P.M. on weekdays, nine P.M. Sunday. Westiest, wealthiest town in the state, Birmingham in Oakland County, has six liquor stores and gas stations. They close no later than nine and ten P.M., and two of them are closed entirely on Sunday. Did we settle that discrimination and sexual harassment lawsuit that was filed last October against the city police department? Tim Johnson, Karen Weaver, et cetera? It had nearly twenty victims. We never saw an update. I believe Flint-based Dean Yodas was the plaintiff's attorney. Wondering if we have a potential million, multimillion dollar judgment hangover. Best, Ally, eighth ward. And the last written comment is from Donna Baldwin. Donna in third ward. We are scared to leave our house. My children in Georgia call every day begging us to walk away from our house we own outright. Light is everywhere and nothing is torn down anymore. You will all argue all night tonight about who gets the gold and metal while we are out here dying with leaky roofs, surrounded by savage criminals who will knock our head off for a nickel. Dope dealing is everywhere. Gunshots all night, all day. Crumbling Flint schools are full of illiterate children. Not one twelfth grader last year tested a cos ready level in Flint, Beecher, or Hammond. Santino Guerra, why did you claim last week you were a police officer? You are not a licensed police officer. You're a cad. I also don't believe you even leaving Flint, let alone in your mama's apartment as a twenty-three year old college graduate with a full-time job and twenty-five thousand dollars from a council job where you do absolutely nothing. You will be voted out next summer. I'm also tired of seeing non-residents get put on all these city boards. God bless Dev and Maurice for being true and thinking and not taking that treatment. You know everyone in this town. Hold on, third ward. And that is the last written comment from the president.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Donahue. I would just like to announce that Councilman Guerra, uh, has been taken ill and has had to leave the meeting. Now, that brings us to the executive closed session on the agenda.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. May? Oh, I beg your pardon, you're correct.
You're supposed to stop talking and that's what's my point.
I'm aware of what your point of order is, Mr. May.
No, you're not. I ain't said it.
Well, what is your point of order?
You need to cut that mess out and follow the rules. You'd be out of order when your point of order is stopped.
Say what your point of order is.
That's what it was, but I don't want you to get a habit of saying what my point of order is when I say point of order, stop, and I'll say you forgot to do the council comment.
Mr. May, cease talking. You've made your point of order. It's a point well taken. I forgot to do council response. So we will now have two minutes of council response to public comment. Mr. May, you have the floor.
Yeah, however minutes we got and what this council do and don't do, I've noticed this council already under you just vote illegally. I've heard from all kind of folks. But what I'm gonna use my time on is what them very important speakers said. Mr. Davis, you can vote for Trump, you can vote for Mr. Rump or whoever, but I'm not gonna tolerate being called the N-word because I'm a Democrat. I'm not gonna tolerate on a podcast be called MFs. I'm not corrupt. Everything you say, we looking and seeing. And this council ought to watch it. The Ethics and Accountability Board ought to watch it. Because if I go on a public podcast, this ain't a private conversation, and call people the N-words, talk about body parts of men and women revving against each other saying we-
Mr. May, you're out of order. It is now time for council response to the speakers. Please remain germane to the speakers.
The speaker spoke about this.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order, Madam Chair.
We have a point of order on the floor and I've just ruled. His point was denied. Cease talking, Miss Galloway. Cease talking. We are on a point of order. We have to deal with the point of order before you can bring up another point of order.
Point of order, Madam-
My, my point, I said, you, were you listening to me, Ms. Galloway? You can't bring up the point of order when we're on a point of order.
We're not. You already ruled and you said, Councilman May, you are speaking. He is in his comment to the public. You already ruled and said that he was right. We are not in a point of order. And I want you to chair fairly, Ms. Fields. He has the floor to respond to the public comment and I am doing a point of order.
Your point of order is denied because I was telling Mr. May that we are on the agenda to response to public speakers.
I appealed to the ruling of the chair if you denying the point of order.
I'm not supporting-
There's an appeal on the floor to the ruling of the chair. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Ms. Councilwoman Galloway, I second that.
Ms. Galloway seconds the appeal. You have to be germane and speak to what's on the agenda. And on the agenda is response to public speakers. Mr. May was proceeding to talk about Mr. Davis's podcast. No one talked about Mr. Davis's podcast or any of the things that claims that Mr. May was making, okay? We are only to respond to comments that the public speakers made. Would anyone else like to discuss the appeal?
Madam President, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
You have the floor.
President Fields, you are so adamant about ruling Councilman May and anyone else that doesn't agree with you out of order, and you are clearly not listening. Multiple speakers mentioned his podcast. One of the speakers mentioned the fact that on his podcast, he's quoting a scripture and holding a shirt. One of the, um, people said that he was, that bodies were moving on. Ms. Fields, you are not listening.
Point of order.
There is no point of order during an appeal.
Well, these attacks gonna stick with my name in it.
That's not what we're doing, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis, you are out of order. Please, everyone cease talking. Mr. Davis, you are out of order, Ms. Galloway.
Thank you. And so, President Fields, I am saying to you, listen to the public comments. We only get two minutes and in the space of two minutes, you rule Councilman May out of order and not germane. And he was. He was literally responding to what two of the speakers said, not, I'm not saying that it was in agreeing or not. This is what someone said. And so, all I'm asking you to do is, one, listen to the public comments, but, two, let's not be so quick to try and remove or silence and, and continue to tell people you're out of order, cease talking. I'm just saying to you, in this time, you were incorrect. Mr. May was not in point of order. You recognized that his point of order actually was well taken and you said that. And then you said, Mr. May, you're the first to respond. So he was in his response. You, you silenced him to say you're not being germane, nobody's talking about the podcast. But in fact, Ms. Fields, it was not that, that any of that is relevant except I don't think you're listening to the public because if you were, you would know that he in fact was speaking directly to a couple of the comments. And Vice President Davis, this is not an attack on you. This is strictly saying that the response of our colleague was in line with what questions or concerns or whatever was raised. Let's not attack each other. This is not about that. He was in fact in line. And Ms. Fields, you were not fair in your ruling.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, you now have the floor. Um, I cannot hear Mr. Davis. I believe he's speaking, but I can't hear him.
Let me check, Madam President. Uh, it looks like he got disconnected, came back on.
Yeah, I'm back. I'm back.
Okay, Mr. Davis, you have the floor. We are speaking on the appeal.
The appeal is this. Corruption is what it is. Everybody frustrated because I voted, but... He got his little few friends and emps together with Woodson them. That's for me.
Mr. Davis, I request that you speak on the appeal, be germane to the appeal, which is I ruled Mr. May out of order because he wasn't being germane to responding to public speakers. And his appeal was, I believe that he was.
I don't know why my phone keep dropping.
Okay.
But let me, let me tell you, this is my appeal. I'm appealing all these attacks that I'm taking politically because I won't do what the corrupt out in the street, Woodson them and May's them want me to do. I'm not gonna do it. And they crucified me over AC Dumens Radio, May's them. I don't talk about them, that money he getting when he in California corruptly. I'm not doing that. But he need to keep his mouth off me. Woodson and all of them. They need to keep their mouth off me before I tell their business. That's all I'm saying. Thank you for indulging, Madam Chair, because I will tell it. Madam President.
Thank you. Just a moment. Uh, Ms. Worthing.
I, I was listening to public speaking. I have no idea where body parts came in and some weird stuff I was listening to Mr. May say. Uh, my jaw dropped. I, I don't know what was going on. I would have called a point of order at that time as well. Uh, there's a lot of attacks going on constantly and it's mentally draining and tiring, not only for us, but our constituents. I, I would hope that we can move along in this meeting and be kind and say kind things and, and not say gross, nasty things. Let's, let's be professional, that's all.
Any other discussion in the appeal?
Madam President, this is Councilman May.
Mr. May?
I really wish that people had listened to the public comments and they would have heard people criticizing Mr. Davis for what he was saying on the podcast. If Ms. Worthing think that my comments were alarming, I dressed them up and fixed them up. Mr. Davis was nasty. He say when in Spain, he talk his Spanish. In Rome, he- I won't talk on my personal podcast.
Mr. Davis, you're out of order. Mr. May has the floor.
It's about time to warn him. And so, I'm gonna see how many times I get. So keep it up. We said in presidents. And so, Mrs. Worthing, you gotta hear it. I don't appreciate being called corrupt in front of Ms. Fields. You're attacking Mr. May. You'll never hear it. I don't appreciate it calling corrupt. He can talk about my business. You can talk about how much property tax I owe, my water bill. I don't think you know my business like I know it. And so, Ms. Wor, Ms. Fields, you missing that. We talking about responding to public comment who talked about his unprofessional cussing behavior. You vote for who you want, but we ain't gonna be the N-word. We ain't gonna be, um, MFs and all of that. So, Ms. Worthing, if you're really shocked at me describing it, we've got copies of the, um, video. You should be asking for resignations. Now, if I start talking like that on public podcasts, I'll hear about it in this arena. I'm not gonna stand for it. I'm not intimidated or threatened by him responding to me or the public speakers. That's not the standard of professionalism in the great city of Flint. And I will be voting no on Ms. Fields' ruling that I was not relevant in responding to public speakers because it ain't gonna just be two minutes. I'm gonna talk about this type of communication for a while.
Is there any more discussion on the appeal? Anyone who's not spoken on the appeal? Was someone asking for the floor?
I don't know.
Okay, well, I heard some static in the background. I wasn't sure. Okay, I'm gonna say this on the appeal. You know, during this meeting, people have been attacking each other nonstop. They've been threatening, they've been attacking. They've halted the actual business of the city that we have to get to, very, very important business of the city. All I'm asking is that people try to act professionally, quit saying derogatory things about each other, stay germane, and this portion of the council is to respond to comments the public made. I did not hear the public say anything about Mr. Davis's podcast. I did not hear that. And that's why I said that Mr. May was not being germane in speaking in council response to public speaking. I'm trying to make these meetings efficient, effective, and concentrate and focus on the business of the city. And it's very difficult to do this when other council members have different agendas. So, if you vote yes, you agree with the chair, the ruling that Mr. May was out of order, not being germane in speaking to public, responding to public comments. If you vote no, then you vote with Mr. May. Roll call.
Point of order.
What's your point of order? There is no point of order during an appeal.
Madam Chair, that wasn't the appeal. The appeal is that you would not allow my point of order to be recognized because you said that we were in a point of order, not that Councilman May was out of order.
That is correct.
Janelle, can you read this back? Because I thought the point of order was, uh, what I just stated.
Well, that's what I have, that Mr. May was not being germane during council response.
Nah.
And so, and then Mr. May appealed that.
Point of information. Point of information.
What is your point of information, Mr. May?
I appealed on behalf of Ms., um, Galloway's ruling, Ms. Fields.
Janelle, can you once again read back what the point of order in the appeal was?
Well, I told you what I thought it was. Maybe I missed something. I don't know. I thought it was for Mr. May's not being germane.
No, Madam Chair, she did get it wrong. I was asking for a point of order. You said that we were in a point of order, so my point of order would not be recognized and you said that I needed to cease talking. And I said, point of order, Madam Chair, we are not in a point of order. Councilman May actually has the floor to respond to the residents and you said you are wrong and Councilman May appealed your decision on my behalf. You had not ruled him out of order.
I, I think you're wrong, Ms. Galloway. I, I- I, I think you're wrong, Ms. Galloway. I, I disagree with you. The appeal on the floor is my denying Mr. Mays's point of order.
It was on her behalf, Ms. Fields.
No, on his appeal. Roll call. If you agree with the ruling of the chair that Mr. Mays was not being germane to responding to public speakers, vote yes. If you vote no, you're agreeing with Mr. Mays. Roll call.
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
It's a four-four tie.
The appeal fails with a four-four tie.
No, the chair's ruling fails.
I, um, I'm not sure about that. I believe the vote was on the appeal. So the appeal fails. It was a four-four tie.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Whenever there is an appeal, whenever there is an appeal, the stating of the chair is, "If you support the chair's ruling, you say yes. If you say no, you don't support the ruling of the chair." So therefore, the chair does not give five votes. Her ruling fails. The burden of proof is on the chair.
Point of order.
Ms., wait a minute, Ms. Galloway. I'm going to ask for the city attorney. Ms. Wheeler?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
On the appeal that Mr. Mays against my ruling, the vote was four-four. I believe that means that the appeal failed. Ms. Galloway is saying that the ruling of the chair failed.
The motion failed.
The motion failed. Just a moment, Ms. Galloway. You don't have the floor. Ms. Wheeler? Could you explain that again?
Yeah, there's not enough, there's not enough to support it one way or the other. So you have to go back to where you were before in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to go back to where we were. And Janelle, I, once again, I hope you're timing this. I can't talk on the phone and time at the same time. How much time does Mr. Mays have left?
That was a while back. I don't have it on my phone anymore. I'm sorry. I think he had about a minute.
Okay, Mr. Mays, you have a minute. Proceed. In your council response to public speaking.
Yeah, my point has been well made and recorded and demonstrated when the chair don't even know people had criticized Mr. Davis, and I'm highlighting more so what they talking about because it's appalling to me, the whole city and black folks, to be talked about like that. And he can talk that tough talk now and being out of order interrupted me. But hostility and anger and thinking that folks finna be rich overnight, thinking we jealous. I'm not jealous of you and you saying all this negative stuff and attacking people on a podcast, which is a public arena. And this is a public arena, and that's what they talking about. This council should be asking you be censored. You should be punished. You should be asked to resign. And you shouldn't be portraying us nationwide like we a group of cussers and you talking Ian language, talking about when in Rome, talk like the Romans, and when in Spain, talk like the Spanish. But when you talking to the Ian, so this ain't gonna be over. And now you voting, you voting with folks. They talked about that too.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Mr. Davis, you have the floor in council response.
Thank you for indulging, Madam Chair. I think you doing a wonderful job and gonna do a great job of chair. Now, let me get to work. These Facebook bullies, Watson and Mays them, can sit down somewhere. Worry about your own war. My war love me. Run against me and find that out for yourself. My war love me and I do a great job, not only from my war, but the whole city. And I can go, I've been before about 200 million folks, the whole country. You should try to do what I do. I don't have to do corruption. Don't try to control this body with that corruptness y'all do in y'all backdoor meetings, Mays. Your game is up. It's time now to work with the administration.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Go ahead.
I'm going to ask you as well. Please, this time is for you to respond to public comments.
I'm back to the public. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I honor that. But let me tell you, these few imps that they brought to this meeting to attack me, I'm tired of it. If you don't like what I'm saying, get off my social media page. Mays, Doomis, and all of y'all. My social media is private. And what I do to move this city forward, and y'all mad about it because I'm not obeying the corrupt, which would be y'all. I'm not gonna do it. Y'all been holding this city hostage long enough, disrespecting from the city attorney all the way down to the clerk. You done. You're done. Uh, Madam Chair, like I said, and Councilwoman Galloway, I'm giving you credit that I think you could do a great job, but you gotta be none biased. The black folks the ones racist right now. Trail Cal, get in line with the right thought. I don't answer to nobody. I got a God. And you supposed to be a preacher. Act like one. I'm not scared of you or nobody else. I don't worship no man. And I'm responding to the callers. And the young lady that live in Civic Park, we doing a lot of rehab work with the Man Administration of Haskell Center. You in the right neighborhood. We had 2.6 million, and you can't see one dime of that money spent because the money went to corruption. We get 1.8 millions a year on the north side. The north state don't know nothing about that money, but Davis is trying to get that money over there.
Madam President.
My time up? My time up? Why she talking?
Janelle?
Yes, it's up.
My time reset.
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Now, Madam President, he threw around more corrupt in that comment, and you didn't say anything. He attacked a public speaker. You didn't say one word.
You gonna let her interrupt me, Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis? Please talk. Continue, Ms. Galloway.
And so, if you're going to say no personal attacks, that's got to be, especially from Councilman Davis. I understand being frustrated, and we're not here for that. But I'm telling you that you're not being fair and consistent around the board, and that's my point of order. There were many personal attacks that just happened in those two minutes, and not one time did you interrupt.
I'm going to deny your point of order because I did interrupt multiple times. There was no breach of the rules. I tried to keep council members from attacking each other, trying to get them to stay germane to what the speakers were saying. And there are many council people who are not being germane. There are many council people that are spending their time and their effort disrupting the meeting, obstructing the meeting, slowing down the meeting, the business we're trying to get to, including yourself, Ms. Galloway. I have tried to be fair, and I believe I am being fair. Apparently, it's really, really difficult to keep members from attacking each other, as you well know, including yourself. You continue to attack me, saying I'm not being fair. So I denied your point of order because I am trying to be fair. And I did say something to both Mr. Mays and Mr. Davis multiple times on the subject. But they're adult people, and sometimes it's difficult to get adult people to collect themselves, stay calm, and just respond to what they're supposed to respond to on the agenda. So I deny your point of order.
I can appeal.
Now, Janelle, Janelle, I believe...
Do I have a floor?
Yes.
Yes, you do. Uh, I don't know where Mr. Davis is on his time. Did the bell ring?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Davis, I believe your time is up. I believe it was up prior to the point of order. I thought I heard the bell, but I couldn't be sure. So, Janelle, who's the next council member to respond to public speakers?
Well, that would be Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Winfrey Carter? You have the floor. Would you like to respond to the public speaker?
That, uh, Councilman Griggly?
Yes, I made that announcement. I made that announcement. He's still.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna pass because I'm not gonna be germane tonight. Because I, I got something to say, I got something to say about everybody sitting up here. I'm a part. I'm just a part. I would like to thank the, um, speakers, um, for your, your comments. And, um, I'm gonna pass tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winfrey Carter, for your sensible pass on comments tonight. The next council response?
Mr. Winfrey?
Thank you, Madam President. And again, to all the speakers, uh, thank you for exercising your, your right, uh, to speak to this council and let us know what's on your mind. And, uh, Madam President, that's all I would like to say at this point. I'll, I'll make my comments at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. I believe next is, uh, Mr. Griggs, or no, Ms. Galloway?
Um, yes, I'll save my comments as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Galloway. Next is Mr. Griggs.
Yeah.
Mr. Griggs, do you have comments regarding the public speakers?
Yes. Uh...
Stay germane to comments made during public speaking.
Okay. To Mr. Chris Del Maroni, uh, the city trees. I just ran into a deal about two or three weeks ago that the, the funding hasn't finished yet. So that's why the, uh, sudden slowdown or delay on tree, uh, city tree removal. So that's, that's as far as what I know, or that I found out about two or three weeks ago. I just wanted to let you know about that. Uh, now, as far as Mr. Woodson commenting on my, uh, the way he wants to handle my recall is, there's a reason that Mr. Woodson's like this. It's because I publicly, I guess, I publicly stated that I doubted his, uh, that he was actually an honorably discharged veteran. And that has released his anger. And as far as the place, uh, the group home, or not group home, actually assistant living home there on, uh, 1702 Kenwood, uh, a permit was issued number PB 200467. Uh, it was issued and paid for October the 26th, and that included some windows. So, uh, this is really becoming a new point. Uh, this assistant living home is allowed in that particular residential area. And the only way to change that would be with the, uh, planning, uh, commission rules or zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Ms. Worthing?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. See, you can respond to public speakers. Please stay germane to public comments.
Okay. Um, what makes a public comment sometimes is like reading the comments under a Facebook article. Uh, it, it's depressing. It's bad for your mental health. Um, I, I think a lot has gone on in our nation lately. Uh, COVID is wearing on a lot of people. We just had an election. Um, you know...
Ms. Worthing, please stay germane to comments made by the public speakers.
Yes. Um, Madam Chair, I am. I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of the negativity I heard. If that is okay to continue?
As long as you were responding to comments made by the public speakers.
Yes, I am.
All right, proceed.
So, I'm just asking public speakers, um, my colleagues to take a deep breath and reflect on what's going on. Uh, because this is not good for anyone's mental health. It's not good to just constantly bash the city that we live in and the people in it, the people in leadership. Uh, I, I am very thankful for the positive speakers that spoke. Um, Chris Del Maroni had some valid points to say. Um, there's another gentleman, I believe his name was George, who, uh, was right on target and had some good suggestions. I think we all need a little hope, a little hope for our city and our future. And I hope we can come together and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Um, Janelle, I'm hearing a clanging. Is that the timer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, it's time for my response to the public speakers. I would like to thank all the public speakers, especially the ones that are bringing real issues, tangible issues, to our attention with their opinions on what their problems are and, and how we might be able to help them. I also agree with Ms. Worthing that the negativity and the attacks and the bashing of people, whether in leadership or just a council member, is really not helpful. And I would hope that in the future, public speakers would try to do the hard thing, which is offer suggestions and resolutions to those problems they bring to our attention, so we may consider them. So that concludes council response. Now we have the executive closed session. I'd like to hear from the attorney, please.
Yes, the City Attorney's Office. Yes, the City Attorney's Office requests to go into an executive session for purposes of discussing pending civil litigation pursuant to MCL 15.268E to consult with an attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection to pending litigation. Um, it would have a detrimental effect. We would do this in an open session, so we would depress that in the water litigation.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Do I hear a motion? To go into executive session? Yes, Ms. Worthing.
Madam President, uh, I make a motion that we go into executive, uh, session to talk about the water litigation as, uh, told to us by our attorney.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Madam President.
Um, I don't know who spoke first. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Yes, I support the motion.
Um, it's been, uh, moved and supported. I don't think we have discussion on this, do we, Janelle?
We do. Yes.
We do?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Okay. Um...
Madam President, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
Yes, Ms. Galloway?
Thank you. Through you to the attorney. Attorney Wheeler, in the, um, Open Meetings Act under Meetings in Closed Session, Session Number Four, says to consult with this attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, but only if an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the public body. That, is that the, um, one you were citing? That- is that the, um, one you were citing?
Yep, I just cited that specific provision.
So, what is the settlement position of the public body? So, does that mean-
What do you mean?
I'm- I'm trying to understand what you mean that's behind there.
Throw me to you. You can respond.
What's- I didn't understand the question. Would you please restate it?
Is the public body that you're citing in that, that's the city of Flint, is that correct?
Yeah, that's- that's you all. Yep, the city of Flint, yep.
So, the- the- the city is working on a settlement position. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I'm- I'm just trying to- I'm trying to understand. One of the questions that came up, is this, um, settlement, the settlement for the, um, six million that's being discussed? Or I can't remember the other piece of it that, uh,
Well, as I- as I told you last week when we spoke, that the six hundred million is between the plaintiff and the state, and I provided you with those public term sheets. So, that- that covers that portion of it, um, which I provided to you and to the council. Um, the public information shows the percentage going to adults, minors, businesses, and other relief. That's all in the public information.
That wasn't- Attorney Wheeler, that wasn't my question. Um, I just wanted to clarify. One of the speakers asked, was this that settlement? Or was this the Scott Kincaid settlement?
No, it's- it's the water litigation that we've- we've been asking the- come to counsel, which is not Scott Kincaid.
Yeah, that- that- I just wanted to make sure that the, um, that- that question that was raised in the, um, public comment was, in fact, um, answered. Attorney Wheeler, um, part of going into closed session requires that, um, the confidentiality remain. What are the consequences and/or, um, what happens when someone violates what was said in a closed session?
Well, in- in this case, as was requested and- and you are aware of, um, if- if a person violates this, everybody in the case had to sign it. And- and the consequence would be, um, to be brought before the judge. We would have to be all be accountable to each other for anything that is privately disclosed. So, um, until such a time when that can be made public, we're all held to that same standard, including myself.
And the only reason why I'm asking is because in our- in one of our meetings last week, something that was discussed in a closed session was said in an open session of open public meeting, and there was nothing that was done. And so, I'm just wondering, um, who- who is holding each and every one of us accountable to ensuring that the issue is addressed?
Well, I would imagine- I would imagine that the- I would imagine that would be the court. There would be a judge that would hold everybody accountable, which would be Judge Levy. She would hold everybody accountable. And if she so chose, then that's where the consequences would come if I or anybody else were to violate that. And- and, um, and in matter of fact, um, there was some type of purported allegation that Judge Levy did hear on a- a purported violation in which she struck down as not being a violation. So, the- these things are very serious and are things that will be held to an account, um, before the judge, including myself.
Okay. And I just want to say, um, uh, to you, Attorney Wheeler, thank you so much for making yourself, um, available to me. I understand the importance of closed session. I understand the importance of being, um, made aware of exactly where we are as a- a municipality and a body. Um, but again, at this time, I am- I am not going to go into executive session. Um, I- I just, um, believe that I don't even unders- I don't even know why we would be in a position to settle. Because even in my opinion, this is my opinion, it's sitting on the council. Um, the- the city council was, um, overrode on the decisions that were made. And so, I- I- I won't-
But you haven't heard any of the information to know anything about the case, Councilwoman Galloway.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Galloway has the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I am not saying anything about Attorney Wheeler. I am speaking for myself. And as a matter of fact, I thank her for consistently making herself available to me. I have a position. I have thoughts around this. And because I don't choose to take part in the closed session and/or receive any of the information as I share with Attorney Wheeler, when this comes before the po- the body, whether I was in closed session or not, I will have the authority to vote on it one way or another. I don't have to learn anything in closed session, although I understand that that is an important place for it. But no decisions are made in closed session. We can't vote whether we support or agree or do any of those things. And so, I am more than willing to wait until the documentation becomes public and becomes before me as a councilperson. And I will not hinder my colleagues from doing whatever they want to do. And so, I, again, have not signed that disclosure, and I will not be supporting or going into a closed executive session.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Ms. Worthing?
Through, um, through you to Ms., um, Wheeler. If someone is not privy to the information, are they allowed to vote on a session that they would not or refuse to attend?
Yeah, you can still vote because of you. That's your council duty to vote, and that's the reason why we want to talk to you because we're- we're a part of being responsible to give you the information you need. But it doesn't prevent somebody from voting, even if they don't have all the information, you know? So, that's- that's the person's decision.
That's unfortunate. So, I- I would encourage all of the council members to vote to go into executive session and to attend. Voting on something that you have no clue what you're voting on, to me, is egregious. Uh, I- I- I don't know of any senator or- or anybody in leadership that would vote on an issue without knowing their facts or what's going on. Uh, so, I will be attending this, and- and I will get the information so I can make an informed decision for my constituents. Thank you.
Madam President.
Um, another discussion. Mr. Davis and then Mr. Maze.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to Attorney Wheeler.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ms. Wheeler, uh, I got a question because, see, I don't want this to be politics. Uh, this is time sensitive that we dealing with?
Yes, it is.
So,
And hi- and part of the public is- I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, in the public, I'm hearing this stated even from, uh, uh, Mr. A.C. Dumas earlier today. We're not making decisions in- 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 in a session. It's imperative to get information. Am I correct or am I not? Could you please correct me?
No, you're- you're correct. I mean, the- the information you- there's- there's nothing that's before you to make the vote on. It's- it's to educate, as we always try to do our inform in a closed session. So, it's- it's what we usually do. And also, for those who want to know about the six hundred million, that information is public information on the city's- on the- on the state's website. So, and that information's been provided to all the council to ha- have that information as well. And that gives timeframes and other things that are public information that were- that were provided to the city on- on other portions. So, there's a lot of information that's public as well.
So, Mr. Woodson them could give in- the impressive false information or misinformation because we're not making them kind of decisions. We getting information and I'll- I'm like Ms. Worthing on this one. I highly suggest us to get some information so when it become public, whatever we do, we'll be more properly informed to help the constituency in this community. Thank you for indulging, Madam Chair. You're the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Maze? Mr. Maze?
Yeah, thank you. I don't- I don't know who the best, but I'm one of the best. I'm one of the ones who marched in below degree weather when Aaron Brockovich sent, um, Robert Bocock in here when this water crisis stuff first started. I had, um, something to do with putting motions on the floor to go back to Lake Huron. I also had something to do with fighting emergency managers and Leanne Walters and Melissa May and people was coming at a house and we was working. And so, I know what's going on. I've also been privileged to the, um, media's definition of the percentages of what's being proposed in the six hundred million, including the attorney fees. If the information turn out to be right, adults ain't covered unless they got medical documentation. And doctors couldn't get it. They act like they didn't know what was happening, hair loss, rashes. I'm not satisfied with the settlement, but I want the public to know while they are discussing it, I haven't been in a closed session on it once yet. They say I'm a plaintiff. The people I represent are plaintiffs. Every councilperson is a potential plaintiff, and they represent plaintiffs. But yet and still, you can't come in. We don't trust you not to talk, Maze. Okay, well, whatever. I don't need to go in. I remember telling this city, because the attorney back then filed an intent to sue letter, and we ain't sued yet. I say we should file a counter suit. We are plaintiffs in this lawsuit. The city of Flint is a plaintiff. The state of Michigan is a plaintiff. The EPA is a plaintiff. The engineering firms is plaintiffs. And yet, people don't know what's going on? I can guarantee you, when it come time to a vote, things have to be talked publicly. Guess who can talk about all of them? Ain't gotta bite their tongue. Ain't gotta worry about violating nothing. Don't give me no information. Not in no closed session. That's like a gag order. I'm gonna continue to be an advocate. I brought- had something to do with bringing two sets of lawyers in. They should be calling me now. So, I'm gonna have fun with this. Because if you don't cover them grown folks, the majority of the people I represent, I want to file formal objections to Judge Lawson. And if she don't listen, I want to appeal them to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. I'm not like my colleagues. I kind of know what's going on. And I can predict what they gonna hear in closed session as it relates to the plaintiff being a defendant, the city of Flint. I mean, I said that wrong, as it relates to the defendant. And it's the city of Flint ready to settle and vouch with that with the six hundred million. Well, that six hundred million ain't right. It's gotta be better. The parameters gotta be broad. Property damage, three percent. Adults with documentation, fifteen percent. Reject it. I don't know if we gonna go in there. I'm gonna keep talking about it. They'll figure out a way to communicate one way or the other. Or we gonna have to have a, uh, viral town hall meeting. Thank you. I'll be voting no.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam President.
Uh, I think it was Mr. Winfrey. Mr. Winfrey, was it? Mr. Griggs?
No, ma'am.
We're still on the first round. Mr. Griggs?
Madam Chair, this is Ms. Winfrey Carter.
And then Ms. Winfrey Carter. Mr. Griggs?
Okay, uh, please, I'm gonna make a statement here that I'm asking Ms. Wheeler to jump in and- and spot me if I'm talking out of line. But as far as I know about this settlement, all ages are covered for compensation. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will be voting no to go into the executive session. And, um, like the reas- uh, the reasons I stated, um, the last time. First, I think the six hundred million dollars, that's a slap in the face. We need to go back to the table and try to get more. And secondly, you know, we were all affected. And- and I believe that the residents of the city of Flint should be involved in everything that takes place. This whole process should be transparent. So, for those reasons, I will not be going in because I'm- I'm not gonna be- I'm not gonna vote to approve, um, six hundred million dollars anyway. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
I'm Ms. Worthing. This is your second round. I- I would like a first round first, please.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Wheeler, I'd like to ask you a question. The six hundred million that people keep referring to is the, basically, the ceiling of the state settlement. Is this true?
Yes, that's the plaintiffs who are represented by attorneys and the state have worked that out. That's not in the equation for the city to make a decision on that amount. And- and I have sent the documents to everyone on the council so that you could have that information for these cases that are before Judge Judith Levy. So, all of that information is in the public documents showing the percentages for minor children, the percentages for adults, for businesses, and other programmatic relief. This is all- I am only speaking of the public information that was put in back in August.
What is your point of information, Mr. Maze?
Point of information through you to the speaker, that would be adults with personal injury documentation only, correct?
I know. I'm looking at the document that is public on the city of- of the state of Michigan's website. It says adults and property damage settlement category. And it shows eighteen percent, fifteen percent for adults, three percent for property damages. That's eighteen percent of six hundred million.
Point of information.
What is your point of information, Mr. Maze?
Those percentages would come after attorney fees, and are you neglecting to read the part that say adults with personal injury documentation is my question.
No, I- I think you have this information too, Councilman Maze, and so, I can read the whole thing. So, it's all in the record. Um, so, like I said, in here, it talks about the whole process. It talks about, um, a claims process. It talks about all of those things in this information that is public. Um, it says the- this is all the awful public information. It says here, because the amount to be paid to each claimant will depend- will be- will in part depend upon how many claims are verified. The precise amount to be paid to each claimant will not be known until the claims process is completed. So, it talks about the claims. It talks about those things in general. It's all in here. Um, and it says here, adults in Flint, this is all stuff that's not negotiated by the city. Adults in Flint exposed to Flint water during exposure period will be eligible to recover compensational for- for personal injury. Um, and that's the same thing with- with children and- and other things that are- that are documented in here. And- and so, so I'm just giving you the information that was provided in August that I know you have as well. This is the public information.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler.
It also talks about in here, yep.
I still have the floor. All right. What I'm hearing leads me to believe that there is some confusion among my colleagues and some misperceptions on their part, misconceptions on the part of the public. This six hundred million, the city that is the state- This six hundred million, the city that is the state settlement, does the city of Flint have any authority whatsoever to amend that settlement?
No.
The state settlement?
This is done with the plaintiffs. No, this was done back in August. And we learned about it when the state released the information.
So, I hope my colleagues understand that this six hundred million that is in a public document is the state settlement. And the city council has no authority whatsoever to change that settlement or the terms of that settlement. None whatsoever to change that. I also wanna say that I am very sorry to hear that some of my colleagues are choosing to self exclude themselves from an executive session where I believe they might possibly hear information that's pertinent to a decision that might be coming to us, that will be coming to us in the future. I don't know how you can make a decision on- you don't know what you don't know yet. Going into an executive session does not obligate you to anything in a vote. It just gives you information in order to make your decisions. So, Ms. Worthing, you ask for a second round?
Yeah, you actually went through a lot of actually what I was just gonna say, but I'll just reiterate it again. What I heard was the colleagues who do not want to go into executive session feel that the six hundred million is a slap in the face. However, what I heard Ms. Wheeler say is that we have no- we have no involvement in how the six hundred million is distributed. We have no vote in that. It's nothing we're gonna be responsible for. And so, when we go into executive session, that is not the point of it. It will be other information that we need to listen to and understand so that we can vote properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I hear Mr. Davis ask for a second round?
You heard Councilwoman Galloway.
Okay.
No, I didn't.
You did not. Okay. Ms. Galloway, it's your second round.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Um, I just want my constituents to understand that I'm very aware, very much aware of the fact that I would be making a decision without getting information in a closed session. What I am not- what I am concerned about is the required document. I understand that we go into executive session all the time. Um, what's alarming to me is that many of my colleagues will not just go into executive session, receive the information that they need, and they move forward. No- nobody was in the mediation with us when we were in mediation for the Gleewood deal. The way that I, as a legislator, and I'm not speaking for my colleagues, the way that I went in and came out-
Excuse me, just a moment, Ms. Galloway. There's static for somebody who's not muted. Janelle, could you check on that?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you. Proceed, Ms. Galloway.
Thank you. And so, I want this community to know that I don't- I'm not misunderstanding anything. I don't think that we are going to be able to change anything with the six hundred million. I just know that I am not willing to find out information that requires me to sign off on a documentation. I- it is no offense to anybody. Once the documentation comes to us, which it always does, we usually get our information. When we're voting on settlements, we usually get our information. And there will be things that I will be able to ask. And if I can't ask them, then I will make a decision. But I too, at this point, am not even considering supporting anything because in my opinion, whatever is going on with this litigation, and for me, we should be in the Supreme Court somewhere. And so, I just wanna thank my colleagues for listening. And I'm asking that my colleagues, we wouldn't attack each other. Everybody finds out information and finds out comfort in their own way. And, um, I think that this is- this has been great dialogue and nobody should be angry with anyone.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Is there any further discussion on a second round?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President. Clearly, if you got the details of the state proposed settlement, and I know them, that's why I kept saying it's adults with personal injury stuff. You can't just say fifteen percent for adults. If they ain't got no bone marrow test that Napoleon Scoldnik is giving, if the court ain't approved a legitimate test, if they ain't got nothing from a doctor showing personal injury, all them adults is left out. Ms. Wheeler, I want you to know from what I'm hearing, the children seventeen and under that's getting seventy-nine point five percent, they don't have to have documentation. I want that settlement to have adults in it, documentation or not.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
Um, to, um, Mr. Mays, are you aware that that- what you're stating is incorrect? That there are tiers? And there is documentation for some, and then others don't need it. There are tiers in this, and that's the same for the adults. That's all public information.
Ms. Worthing, I'm very- yeah, and I'm answering and I'm responding as to the speaker. Ms. Worthing, I'm very aware that kids- children with documentation might get more and children with no documentation still gonna get some. I'm very aware that adults with documentation get some and adults with no documentation get nothing. They ain't in it. So, you become aware. When you become aware, you'll quit doing these points of information thinking you telling me some, and you gonna come back and say, "Oh, he was right about that three percent." "Oh, he was right about them attorney fees might be thirty-three and a third. They might be twenty-five percent." We don't know all the details until the court accept it and that type of thing. Then there's an objection period. And it can be objected even to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. So, you don't know what you talking about when it comes to that particular document. What this closed session might have to do, it might have to do with the city trying to reach a settlement. In most cases, the state then took care of the city's liability. I don't know, and I'll wait to see what's proposed in this city settlement because we had some liability too. So, yeah, I'm way more astute than you might wanna give me credit for. And I ain't tripping because I'll make you eat your words when you say, "I don't know how it's divided up based on what I think." I know I got the document in front of me. It starts out, um, terms, it says in back black bold print, "Terms of settlement of Flint water crisis against the state of Michigan." I know about the state of Michigan. I know about the city of Flint. I know about the EPA. I know about, um, the engineering companies, you know. So, you gotta catch up. You gotta catch up. But to answer your point of information, I'm very aware. And I'm telling you, I'm gonna talk about it freely, every little tidbit I get. If you go into an executive session and break the law and come out and talk about it, I'm gonna talk about that. I'm gonna be free to talk, just like I have been since two thousand fourteen. Ain't gonna be no gag order, Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Is there any further discussion on anyone on the second round? I have some discussion. Here's- I have a concern, and here's my concern. The vote for to go into an executive session requires six votes. Councilpeople who don't want to attend that session are certainly free to not attend that session. But by voting no to not go into executive session, you're basically denying the other council members who need to hear from the attorneys on pertinent information in order to vote when a settlement agreement comes before us. So, Ms. Wheeler, my question to you is, can other councilpeople prevent councilpeople who want to go into closed session to discuss this pending litigation from doing so because of the rule of six votes to go into executive session?
You need six to go in. So, you have to have a vote of six, um, to go into the closed sessions. You don't have to have six in the closed session, but you have to have a vote of six. So, like I said, that's the whole point is for the council not only to be able to talk about this, but to talk, you know, and have questions answered, and you all hear each other in the closed session as everything's being discussed. But of course, certainly the vote is done outside of there publicly as it always has been. But yeah, like I said, if you don't have six, if you don't have six, then you don't get to go into a closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Well, I would like to say that I would like my colleagues who do not want to go into the closed session to consider voting for a closed session. So, those colleagues who do wanna hear from the attorneys, who do wanna gather more information in order to have pertinent information when this does come from a vote, I urge you to please vote yes and allow those of us who need to, who want to, go into executive session to do so. So, now, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Davis?
Yes?
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Yeah?
Ms. Fields?
Yeah?
Winfrey Carter? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No. No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Vote is five yes, three no.
The motion fails. We cannot go into executive closed session because we do not have six votes. At this point in time, I would like to recess this meeting until Thursday at five thirty.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Mr. Mays?
You don't have that power. You can ask to entertain a motion, but you ain't got the power to recess it, so don't.
Just a moment, Mr. Mays. Let me check the rule.
I know the rules.
Madam Chair?
A motion to recess, Rule fourteen point one. A motion to recess shall state the length of the recess and shall be decided without debate. So, number one, you're correct. We do need a motion. And so, your point is well taken. So, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Davis? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to recess this meeting to five.
Is there a second for that?
Point of order. Point of order. That motion have- that motion have to include more than that, a time certain and all of that. I ain't heard that.
Well, time certain would be five thirty P.M. On a beautiful, without snowing, about forty-eight degree temperature day on a council meeting, and we will not be on location. It'll be done remotely in the great city of Genesee County in Flint, Michigan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Point of order, point of information. What day is he talking about?
Mr. Davis? Thursday. So, the motion is to recess until five thirty P.M. For another remote meeting on this coming Thursday. I have a question before I ask for a second for the motion.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. You can't cheat. See if it's a second. Ain't no debate. Don't cheat.
I'm just trying to ascertain whether that's enough notice.
Point of order. It's a recess. Point of order.
Is there a second to that motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Worthing?
I second that.
The motion's been moved and seconded. There is no debate. Roll call.
Ms. Fields?
Yes?
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, three no.
We are- the vote is five yes, three no. We are recessed until Thursday at five thirty P.M. And it will be a remote meeting. One last question is, do we have enough time to post a sufficient notice?
Yes, I am.
We do. Thank you. This meeting is recessed.